in Los Angeles. And that's arguable depending on which study you look at it, what timeframe they're looking at. But it hovers around that. It's been hovering around that for several years now. That is the enemy here. It's not the condo owner or desired condo owners. It's not the tenants. It's the fact that we are creating an imbalance in our society that is dividing the haves from the have-nots.
District Five Councilmember Jack Weiss asks about the procedure for the distribution of funds, whether it be with or without means testing.
I have questions for the Housing Department and the city attorney about the process by which a relocated tenant gets his or her relocation fee. Let's first talk about the Planning Commission alternative where there is no means testing. How does that tenant get the check? Hold my time.
Okay, hold on, let me, do we have our chart? What we're proposing, some of the process would be the same regardless of which of the schemes you adopt. So we'll start in general. What this proposal and the Planning Commission's proposal does not alter, in some sense, what I would call the values of the way we're coming forward to try to protect tenants. What we have now currently is that it is the obligation of the landlord to make sure that the tenant receives what's due them. And in some instances, there's language in the planning code, I believe, that talks about an obligation to help. As these proposals were going through and the hearings were being held, it was clear to everyone that we needed to have a much more uniform way of making sure that tenants received their rights, the information, and their money in due course, and that they received equal information. So what we have worked through and with the chairman's approval, what the Housing Department came forward and created a scheme that would have actually now for the first time, the city create a relocation contractor. We don't have that now. And we would take this whole conflict between landlords and tenants out of the landlord-tenant relationship, where it is uneven depending on who the landlord is and who the tenant is. We would create a fee that the landlord entering into condo conversions would pay. This Housing Department would have an RFQ and work with all of you on what their qualifications would be. There are these people in the region, so it's not a brand-new-made-up job. We studied what other cities have done and what works, particularly in West Hollywood, where they do a very good job. So we would contract with a relocation contractor. They would have the same obligations wherever they are throughout the city. We would make the offices of LAHD, where we have regional offices in eight different parts of the city, including in yours. They would be able to come there to make it easier for both landlords and tenants. You don't have to go someplace downtown. We would do it regionally so people can stay in their part of town. All right. The landlord would file, they would pay their fee, we would contact the relocation contractor.
They would pay their fee for the contractor?
For the contractor, to LAHD.
Okay.
Right, so all these things now come in a form of an escrow to us, so that it's not between landlords and tenants. We then would have already done the process of contracting the relocation experts, right? We'll go through the RFQ and all those things. Have them onboard. Once that relocation contractor receives the information on a building, they then, we send a letter of kind of introduction, right, to the tenant, saying, "This is what's happened. These are your rights. This is how the process works." They will then be referred to the relocation contractor. The relocation contractor will meet with the tenant. They will now take hold, it won't be a big government thing. And we did that on purpose to try to break down the bureaucracy, to have it be done outside. So the relocation expert contacts the tenant. The tenant would have filled, will have received a form where they will self-certify their income. And as we go through this process, we're going to have to work on this issue of self-certification, because it'd also be self-certifying how long they've lived there and other things. So they fill out this form. It comes to the relocation person. They review it. The relocation person makes a determination in terms of all of the different categories. And this would be true regardless of whatever scheme you all adopt, what the categories are. They would make the determination as to who is who, and as such, what is it that they're entitled to receive. They would let LAHD know, they would let the tenant know, and they would let the landlord know.
The Chair of the Planning and Land Use Committee, District One Councilmember Ed Reyes, says there's an urgency to address these issues and urges support for the Planning Commission report.
You know, colleagues, this has been the kind of discussion we should probably have been every week, maybe not as long. But engaging these issues in terms of what we need to do to make a difference. I just stand before you, and first I want to recognize Herb Weston's work. I know it's been a year we've been pounding away, both chairpersons of respective committees. We've been out to those community meetings, we've had those hearings, we see what's happening in the streets. It's been made evident by the advocacy we've been hearing every week in committee, if not in council. For me, there's a sense of urgency. There's a sense of urgency that we need to address these issues now, quickly, that all of the articulation as to how we get there and all the different amendments and changing the rules, we can still be doing that on a separate track. But on this instance, I encourage my colleagues, let's support the Planning Commission. I know we come from the same place, Councilmember Weston and I, but I really believe that every Thursday when I have my district meetings, my casework, I have my staff telling me, "How do we respond to this single parent, this senior, who's about to be put out in the street, who's been told they have to leave, who has no other recourse?" And this is happening in a very, very large number. People talk about it happening in the West Side. Just recently, I was told by one of my colleagues that Pico Union is being considered one of the up-and-coming neighborhoods. But for me, that might sound good, but on the other hand, I have community members that tell me, "Councilman, thank you for the new police station, thank you for the new library, thank you for the new schools," but it's not for us, because I have to leave my apartment in the next two weeks. I have to now leave where I grew up, what I fought for to make cleaner and healthier for my children. We no longer can afford to live here.
Right.
So it's happening in Pico Union, it's happening in Highland Park. Every time we invest as a city, we continue to push people out, and yet these are the folks that vote for us. When over half of this city are renters, and yet they're the very same people that we are stabbing, not only in the back, but in the front and everywhere else, every time we choose not to respond. So I don't see any harm in supporting the Planning Commission's report. I see no problem moving forward with these other potential policy statements on a different track, so it can be a better and more effective way of doing it, if that is truly where we're going to be, and I believe that is where Councilperson Weston wants to be. But I quite frankly cannot see anymore of my constituents and look at them in the eye and say, "Things will get better," because quite frankly, they're not. And if we don't vote for the Planning Commission report, we're going to prolong their misery. We have more kids living in cars, more parents working two, three jobs, more kids without supervision, more kids getting sucked up by the gang culture, more truancy, greater dropout rates. It's all connected because there is no home.
What the council is voting on is an increase in relocation fees to help tenants move to new housing. That compensation would be linked to length of tenancy, financial need, as well as consideration for the disabled, the elderly, and parents of young children. The fee increase would go from a previous high of over $8,000 to a new high of a little over $17,000.
Now we have before us, we'll take up the, if there's no objection, we'll split the So we'll take up the ordinance first. If we can please open the roll on the ordinance as it came from committee. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, five noes.
Okay, that will go over one week. And the recommendations are now before, so please open the roll on the committee recommendations. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
Okay. And the recommendation, it was the committee recommendations, the non-ordinance parts, we split the two, so. Okay, and that will be approved. So this will be back with us in one week. Thank you all.
Because the vote on the ordinance was not unanimous, a second vote will be required next week. You can listen to city council meetings, as well as committee and commission meetings, on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 AM. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 AM. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 AM and 6:30 PM, on Saturday and Sunday at 9:30 AM. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending April 6, 2007. On behalf of Martine Martinez and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Pogue-Joy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
In the city of Los Angeles, when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
911 emergency.
How old is your daughter?
She's four years old. Her name's Danell.
I lost my puppy. Can you help me?
We have a critical missing. There is an Amber Alert, so let's look for any information you get. Pass that into the Watch Commander. Let's be careful out there.
To fight crime and to keep our streets safe.
I think I'm going nuts if this is my daughter.
7855, 7855, 211, 7855, 7855, suspect, 7855, 7855, suspect, 7855, 7855, property taken, this courtesy, code three.
7855, 7855.
All units, code four, 11th and Catalina, suspect.
Standing with our community.
Last night, a police department this morning issued an Amber Alert. A suspect is driving a black Honda Civic.
Working as a team.
Hey, what's up?
I think I saw that car that you were looking for.
Can you show us?
Yeah.
Let's go.
They take pride in what they do.
Day nine, ten, code six, Sunday, every equal.
And when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
Positive on the vehicle.
Right. Last cycle, two, we have positive on the Amber Alert vehicle.
It looks like they found the car.
The LAPD is hiring. Become a part of the team. Visit us at joinlapd.com.
LA City View, Channel 35.
We have more than 500 men and women working right now throughout the city to restore power. A Level III response means that it may be as long as two to three days for the last power to be restored, though we are optimistic that it will not take that long. I, like many Angelenos, don't have power in my own home, so we sympathize out there with many people who are waiting. So on this Friday, the 13th, we will be working as quickly as possible to restore power. We are in council chambers here, John Ferraro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We invite members of the public down here for our regularly scheduled meetings every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., except for the first Friday of the month in which we meet in Van Nuys City Hall. We have our agendas available online at lacity.org through our clerk's office or here in council chambers, and our agendas are publicly available 72 hours in advance. We also have special agendas which are posted 24 hours in advance as well. Members of the public are invited to give their public comment for our general public comment on items that are not on the council agenda but are nevertheless under our jurisdiction, as well as for items that have been specifically agendized for public hearing. Again, on the agendas, you can see which items have received public hearing already and which ones are awaiting a public hearing. If you'd like to speak on any of those or for general public comment, please fill out a speaker card in the back of the room. We want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35, LA City View, which broadcasts through our city's cable system these meetings and rebroadcast them at night. We're also available online, again, at our city's homepage, lacity.org, and you can click on the links and listen along and watch on streaming webcast. We also finally have council phone, which is a service of the city, in which you can use your telephone to listen to the proceedings of the city council or any of our committees. That number is (213) 621-CITY. We will begin this Friday with special presentations that recognize notables and moments in history and some of our city family, and want to invite first, for our first presentation, the council member from the First District, also the council member for Dodger Stadium. Please welcome back to council chambers, we're glad he is with us and well, Council Member Ed Reyes.
Thank you, Council President Garcetti. Let's invite Mrs. Robinson and the whole team to join me here at the podium, please. Councilmember Parks, would you be the honor of joining me here? I hope when Councilmember Perry joins us, there she is, Councilmember Perry? Would you like to join us, Councilmember?
Good morning, Buenos dias. Today is a very special day for me personally because of the privilege for these council presentation. Before I begin, let me introduce some of our honored guests. Joining us today is Mayor Bill Bogart, Mayor of Pasadena. Thank you, Mayor, for joining us. You can come and join us. We have with us Dodger Senior Vice President of Public Affairs, Mr. Howard Sunken. Members of the Jackie Robinson Foundation, including Jesse Sims, who is the grandson of the great Jackie Robinson; Barwell Cathard, Vice President and General Manager of the Jackie Robinson Foundation in Los Angeles; Gary Shuler, Communications Manager, Jackie Robinson Foundation, New York; Nicole Whitman, Director, Marketing and Strategic Partnerships, Jackie Robinson Foundation, Los Angeles; and Mr. Duke Russell, the founder of Jackie Robinson Day in Los Angeles. Also with us today are two men who helped create the image of what it is to wear the beloved Dodger uniform. Let me introduce both of them. First, our Cy Young Award winner and World Series Champion, Mr. Don Newcombe. And of course, a man known for speed around the base pads, who in 1965 scored the only run in Sandy Koufax's perfect game against the Chicago Cubs. A player every Dodger fan knows as Sweet Lou Johnson. And finally, it is truly an honor for me to introduce the Angelenos, to the Angelenos who are watching, as well as to my fellow council members, Mrs. Rachel Robinson. Colleagues, this Sunday will mark the 60th anniversary of that historic day in 1947, when Jackie Robinson stepped into a regular-season Major League Baseball game, integrating the Major League Baseball forever. As a show of respect and to honor this great moment in our country's history, every Los Angeles Dodger in uniform will be wearing number 42 on their jersey, a number that will be unretired just for this occasion. While it's truly fitting that not only the Dodgers, but that Major League Baseball honor Jackie Robinson, I believe it is equally fitting that we, as a city and as a nation, take a moment on Sunday and reflect on what that particular day in 1947 meant to all of us. And when we look at what's happening today with the outrageous comments by a national figure on radio, Mr. Imus, who has just been recently fired, it is important that we reinforce this message, that it is important. But it's also important that we, at this time, be grateful for not only one man's courage, but for the courage of an entire family. I think that even for those of us who have ever felt the sting or the pain of racism in our lifetime, but have a difficult time imagining what Jackie, Rachel, and the Robinson family were going through during Jackie Robinson's first season with the Los Angeles Dodgers. I've heard stories, I've read stories, but only your family lived it. But on behalf of my community, my district, I want to say thank you to the Robinson family, and in particular, to this wonderful woman standing here next to me, Mrs. Rachel Robinson, whom I will introduce to you in a moment. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Thank you for sharing in that fight in all of our behalf and making a change that few could have been able to make. In my community, you, Rachel, Jackie, and your entire family are what we call piñata breakers. You were the ones that broke the piñata so that many of the rest of us could share in the candy. So for that, I thank you. I have so much more to say, but I would like to share, but I also know that there are many of those of you who are standing here with me today. So before I turn over to Ms. Robinson, I would like to give an opportunity, that's my minute, my opportunity to my esteemed colleagues and guests to share a few words with the council. I know I've been joined by Councilmember Herb Wesson, so at this time, it gives me a great pleasure to ask Councilmember Perry to share a few words. Councilmember Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, and I'm proud to stand here with you and all of my colleagues, and it's a pleasure to stand next to Mrs. Rachel Robinson. As we reflect on the life of her late husband, there's no question that Mr. Jackie Robinson was a phenomenal athlete. But I think it's also important to remember that baseball, while a large part of his life, was not the only part of his life, the talented athlete Jackie Robinson was also deeply concerned with civil rights for all and worked tirelessly with organizations throughout our country, for example, the NAACP. He worked diligently with church groups and community organizations such as the YMCA and the National Conference of Christians and Jews. So today, as we stand here and reflect on the life of Jackie Robinson and Jackie Robinson Day here in the city of Los Angeles, I'd like to ask that we also celebrate the deep devotion and commitment he brought to advocacy for social issues and the legacy he left behind for all of us.
Now, I'd like to invite Councilmember Bernard Parks.
Thank you, Ed. I would just like to thank Mrs. Robinson for being here. What she and her family has done for not just baseball, but for the world as it relates to equality cannot be put into words. Many of us lived through that period. You have to be, Eric, you have to be older to live through that period. But when Jackie broke into baseball, I was three to four years old, but I remember as a teenager, watching baseball and watching the things that went over the air as to what was going on. And you really don't get a real significance of what the achievement until you get a chance to take a little tour of Vero Beach and have Maury Wills point out where these used to be the black stands, these were the black water, well, colored water fountains, these were the places that the ballplayers couldn't go. And then, when you get a chance to go to Kansas City and see the Negro Baseball League Museum, it then all hits home as to what he was confronted with, that he, although he had the talent, could not play baseball just because of the color of his skin. That is a remarkable indictment as to the people that were running baseball and the people who supported that as it relates to the government and cities and counties, states in the U.S. And this is the kind of thing that you'd think about, a young man who steps out on a diamond and even his teammates didn't want him there. That then is asked to perform, and he performed and performed well for many years. And so that's the kind of issue I think we have to understand, in addition, enjoying his baseball feet, enjoying his skill. And the thing we forget about, he was equally as good a football player, that he could have done just as well in the NFL as he did in baseball. But what he did is change the dynamics of this country, just as Rosa Parks deciding, "I'm not going to move from this seat," changed the dynamics of this country. He made that kind of indelible statement. And although things are continuing to improve, we've not gotten to the point that all is well. Just as Ed mentioned, we have people that say dumb things on radio, and the greatest thing I heard this morning is that we have people who say dumb things are unemployed. And so these are things that we have to continue to strive and ensure that Mr. Robinson, Jackie Robinson's legacy does not get tarnished, does not get ignored, and does not get forgotten because of what remarkable things he's done. The fact that every Dodger ballplayer is going to wear number 42, I think, is another remarkable exercise to show that his memory lives long and glowing, and I'm just pleased to be here and welcome the family and say thank you for all you've done for us.
Thank you, Councilmember Bernard Parks. Now, I'd like to ask Councilmember Herb Wesson to join us.
Thank you. Good to see you. Anyway, I wanted to thank you, Mr. President, members, and to my dear friend, Ed. I think that this is a very fitting ceremony. This is the least that we can do, but I want to just kind of, for one moment, share with you how I kind of, sort of, am connected with this family. Plus, it's an honor to be here with Sweet Lou. I hear him laughing in the back and Don. But two days before I was sworn in as Speaker of the California State Assembly, we did it during Black History Month, and we honored several outstanding women from throughout the United States, one of which was Dr. Martin Luther King's daughter. And each one of these women were escorted by a member of the Assembly. In fact, also, we had Billy Dee Williams there. Now, I don't know how he got in the mix, but he was there. It was my honor to escort this young lady, and I was saying, "I cannot believe that a poor boy from the wrong side of the tracks would be afforded this opportunity. This is unreal." And then about a year and a half later, I had an opportunity to hang out with this young lady. And in Sacramento, they have a professional baseball team called the Sacramento Rivercats. And I think the year before, every stadium did a special ceremony, retiring your dad's number, or number 42. This stadium hadn't been built yet, so they had a special event where we were at, and they asked us to throw out the first pitch, and that's how we met. We met. So it was great to be a part of that. But when I was out of office in Sacramento, I had to move all of my stuff down back home. There were two critical items that I cherish, that I couldn't find, and I want to show you these things that I keep with me everywhere that I go. People don't know that I have a baseball signed by Sherri. But what people really don't know, my pride and joy, is I have a baseball. It's not, you can see it's faded, but it's signed by Jackie Robinson. These are two of my most priceless possessions, and I wanted to show them off. Anyway, you deserve this honor. Oh, wait, wait. Security, please. Security, please come get my treasures.
Mr. Reyes, we've got a couple council members. Should I call them by now?
One more speaker, I'd like to invite Mr. Don Newcombe. And then we have the council, then I'll ask Mrs. Robinson. Mr. Don Newcombe, please.
Thank you. Thank you. You council members, when I tell you that you're honoring today a great, great, great American named Jackie Robinson, I want you to know that I know a little bit about Jackie Robinson. We became teammates, and we became roommates, we became golf mates, and we had a lot of fun together. And this was a great American. But let me tell you something else that maybe you don't realize. He cherished this woman right here. This is the reason. Rachel is the reason for a major part of Jackie's success. And believe you me, I know, because I've known Rachel for a number of years, you know, a few years. But in any case, it's my honor and pleasure to be here today because of this honor. And of course, it's my pleasure to be anywhere now when I think back about my life, but in any case, I'm here today and being a part of this honor of this great American and my good friend. And I know that you want to hear from this great lady, and so I'm going to shut my mouth and say thank you again on behalf of Jackie and his memory and my memory bank. And listen, you don't know how much it means to me and these memories of Jackie Robinson. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Newcombe. I'd like to, is it okay to recognize now Mr. Labange and then Mr. Alakon?
I just wanted to rise and say God bless Rachel Robinson, God bless Jackie Robinson. My son, Charles, is nine years old. We're watching the Jackie Robinson story. It opens up with a young man trying to play baseball in a sandlot with other boys who are not his same color, and he's the best player. And the coach tries to run him off the field, but he can't because he's so good. He gives him a glove, and then the story goes on and on, and his great brother Mac and all that history and how he had to fight, how tough it is to hit a curveball, but then how tough it is to go somewhere where people don't want you to go and be the first one there. I don't know that story, but I support that story. I learned about that story, and I'm proud of my son, asking me to put that on the CD. And it's just a special story and the great Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum, where we put the plaque up there, which is so special, long overdue, and the great university that you went to, Rachel, and that Jackie went to, and you met at UCLA. Because in the Jackie Robinson story and that, there's a part of, there's a discussion whether he goes to SC and whether he goes to UCLA, and as Bernard said, he was a great football player as well. But he chose that great university, and he met you, which is so special, and so many special people behind you. And I just want to ask my last 30 seconds to Mayor Bogart from the city which Jackie came from. Would you like to say a few words on my time? Mayor Bogart from Pasadena, the home of Jackie Robinson.
I'm honored to represent the city of Pasadena. That's the town where Jackie and Mac grew up. We take tremendous pride in that great tradition of the Robinson Brothers. I'm glad to be here today. There's a history in Pasadena that dates more than 50 years ago. It prompted Jackie to decide not to visit Pasadena once he broke away. I stand here today for a new Pasadena, one that embraces differences, that offers tolerance, and that celebrates the great and powerful strengths of every race, every cultural background. I'm honored to be here to join in this honor to Jackie Robinson. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to also thank my constituent, Duke Russell, who helped start this here, and always great to see Don Newcombe, what a great athlete, and Sweet Lou. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Alakon is next.
Yeah, if you go into my office, you'll see a mural by Melanie Taylor Kent of the Dodgers. Don, you're in it, Sweet Lou, you're in it, and just about every famous Dodger is represented in that mural in my office. When I grew up, baseball was the only thing I could think of that kept me on the straight and narrow. In fact, my mother used to tell me regularly, "If you don't do well in school, you're not going to play baseball in summer." My Little League had the likes of Ron Fairley and Don Drysdale, Wes Parker come out and sign our gloves at the beginning. Willie Mays even came to my Little League when I was just a little kid. But in 1963, my family took a trip to San Francisco, and on that day, we were at, I think, a restaurant called Bunny's or something. I don't know if you remember, it was a coffee shop right on Market Street. And on that day, about 50,000 people marched in front of Bunny's down Market Street to fight for civil rights. And leading that march was Jackie Robinson. And as a 10-year-old kid, I can tell you that, who loved nothing more than baseball, it struck me, and it has been an incredible, indelible memory in my mind, to see not just Jackie Robinson lead the march and later on a pulpit up in some building. I can still remember his white hair as he was speaking down on the issue of civil rights. I also remember the white people who were marching just as vehemently, passionately asking for civil rights. And for the first time in my life, having grown up in the northeast San Fernando Valley, next door to Pacoima, it struck me that people of all creeds and colors needed to come together to recognize that working together was good for America. But it was Jackie Robinson who first inspired me to take a look at civil rights. Through my love for baseball, I was able to see the importance of civil rights. And I can't tell you that I dedicated my life at 10 years old to civil rights, but I can tell you that memory has spurred me on many, many times, because to me, Jackie was not just a baseball player. He was a man who believed in humanity and believed that diversity was a good thing and that everybody should have the right to explore their full potential in life. And as an advocate and lover of sports, I can tell you that he said that we need to focus on more important things in life than just having fun and playing baseball. It was, I don't think it was about baseball for Mr. Robinson. I believe it was about improving our world, and he did so more than many people would. But for me, he was an inspiration, and whatever I've done relative to civil rights, I can tell you there's a little bit of Jackie Robinson behind it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Alakon. And finally, let me just add, it is so wonderful to have the Robinson family here, and thank you, Mr. Reyes, for presenting today. That day when Jackie Robinson played, I believe he went 0-for-3 but got two walks and scored the go-ahead run. And I think it was President Clinton who said, "That day he scored the go-ahead run, and ever since, we've been playing catch-up." And I think it summarizes so well exactly what that symbol was and still what that legacy means today to be alive and for us to need to fulfill as well. So thank you to the Dodgers and to the Robinson family for living that legacy and inspiring
And now, it's my honor to introduce Mrs. Rachel Robinson.
Thank you. Thank you for that warm welcome. On behalf of my family, the Robinson family, and the Jackie Robinson Foundation, I would like to thank the council for this marvelous tribute to Jack and for your efforts in helping us keep Jack's legacy alive. We are especially touched by tributes from California, since I'm a Californian and very proud of that fact. Anniversaries allow us, or give us an opportunity to celebrate the past, and we do that. We had very large challenges, and we overcame them, and we're proud of that. And those challenges actually strengthened us, and we feel blessed by our past. My hope is that in celebrating and commemorating, we will, in the present, think about the things that are still facing us, the challenges that are still facing all of our people, and that we will take them seriously, will recommit to social change, and we will rededicate ourselves and all of our talents and all of the political power particularly to continuing the change. And to sustain the changes and not to let the retrenchment come in, as it always does, try to undo the changes of the past and look forward to the future. Just a celebration is not enough. We have to really think about where we're going from this point on. I thank you all for the welcome and for the honor, and I do hope that we will all be working together in the future.
Ms. Robinson, it is of great honor, and I want to thank my colleagues, to present this resolution, which declares this Sunday, April 15, 2000, as Jackie Robinson Day for the city of Los Angeles.
It's a little even here now, folks.
There we go. Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next presentation, I'd like to recognize from Council District Nine, our Assistant President Pro Tem, Jan Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I am pleased to recognize members of our Los Angeles Police Department, who I am inviting to join me up here. These are individuals who are participating in the 2007 Baker to Vegas Challenge Cup Rally. Let's give them a hand as they come up. Every spring, many of our dedicated officers gather in teams of 20, traversing 120 miles through the Mojave Desert to reach the finish line in Las Vegas, Nevada, to raise funds and awareness for a very worthy cause. This year, on April the 21st and 22nd, Officer Ronnie Daniels and the Metropolitan Mounted Platoon will be entering a team to participate in the Baker to Vegas Challenge Cup Rally. However, this year, instead of 20 runners, the very committed and devoted Metropolitan Mounted Platoon team will consist of 10 runners, with each runner completing two legs of the race. The funds raised during this event will be donated to Stevens Hope The funds raised during this event will be donated to Stevens Hope for Children. Stevens Hope for Children is a nonprofit organization that is dedicated to serving the needs of seriously ill or injured children and their families during the child's outpatient treatment at a health care facility. This very worthy organization allows families to focus on the road to recovery while not being burdened financially during a very emotionally challenging time. The time and dedication that our Los Angeles police officers put into this charitable event demonstrates their commitment to the people of Los Angeles on and off the job. So I wanted to commend their efforts, wish them the very best of luck as they run across the very dusty Mojave Desert in the spirit of hope.
Thank you. I'm Officer Ronnie Daniels from Metropolitan Mounted Platoon. I just want to thank you for this time, allowing us to come up and speak. The reason why I know about this charity is because my youngest daughter has a disease, cystic fibrosis. And many times, she has frequent stops in the hospital that last up to three weeks. And during those times, we're exposed to families who are engaged in these hardships, where they're forced to sleep in their vehicles, to sleep in the waiting room, and sleep in the lobby, because they have no ties to the community. So they have to, they're forced to sleep wherever they can. This community that we are representing wants to help these people, wants to help these families that come from all over the world in the nation. We're asking for your help to help support us, support them. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a special visitor, Police Chief Bill Bratton would also like to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you for the opportunity to honor and acknowledge the work of the officers of the Mounted Unit in terms of the upcoming race and how they intend to use the proceeds that they'll raise. Mounted Unit tends to be one of our most productive units in terms of dealing with crime, but particularly in recent months down in Skid Row, has been very aggressive in Skid Row, going after those, the criminals, the drug dealers, that are preying on so many of the disadvantaged in the Skid Row area. So the balancing of great cops, but also great humanitarians, the acknowledgement this morning recognizes that balance, that in their enforcement activities, they're aiming to help the most disadvantaged, and in their humanitarian activities, they're also seeking to do the same. So my applause, along with yours, to the men and women that will be running in this race, and best of luck. I don't envy you that double leg.
Wow. So as we...
We've got two other councilmembers who want to add their good words.
Let me just say their names for the record. Lieutenant John Peters, Sergeant Mike Porter, Officer Ronnie Daniels, Officer John Buckley, Officer Joe Wiley, Officer Norma Stang, and Officer Matthew Bennyworth. And now I understand we have some additional words from our councilmembers.
Yes, Mr. LeBons and then Mr. Zine.
The vision, home of the Amundson Equations Center. Always thank Bob Amundson for that great gift he gave the city that gave a permanent home to the Mounted Unit. Now the Mounted Unit helps throughout Los Angeles. I'm very proud that you're located right there next to Griffith Park in the Los Angeles River area, and the work that you do, and now this extra special work. Congratulations and good luck on that Baker to Vegas.
Thank you, Mr. LeBons. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. I understand you're part of Metro, and you're running from Baker, California to Vegas, and I've been there many times. I've done that run in a car and a motorcycle, but never like you folks do it on foot. So I want to commend you for that. What is your goal on the fundraising? What are you expecting to raise?
We're trying to raise twenty-five thousand.
And what goal are you at right now?
We're roughly just under ten.
Okay. I'm going to donate one thousand dollars to that cause. I invite my colleagues, and I invite the public that's watching, to do the same, to donate to this wonderful cause. Because this is for not just police officers and their families, but for the general public. So that's my commitment to you, and good luck on the race to Baker to Vegas. I know, Chief, you'll be there at the finish line cheering them on. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. We could turn this into a telethon and probably raise it all right here, but if folks do want to donate, is there a number or a website or any place that they can go to to donate?
He's asking if there's a number or a location to make donations.
Is there a website or...
You can send it to Stevens Hope for Children Foundation. There is a website if you need the address and the phone number. Or you can call the Mounted Unit at (213) 485-5909.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much, Ms. Perry.
Thank you. We'll have another one. Okay. Let's go on the...
And Mr. Zine, for our next presentation, I'd like to recognize the councilmember from the Third District, Dennis P. Zine.
I wore my special tie for law enforcement today. Joining me is Councilmember Greg Smith and also Chief Bratton. Please join us. This is a very, very special day. Normally, when we do these presentations, an individual who's been with the police department for over thirty years, it's the farewell, it's the retirement, but this is very, very special. John O'Toole. John O'Toole, Los Angeles native, living in Studio City. Detective Sergeant John O'Toole, eighty years young, and will soon mark his fifty-fourth year of active duty on May sixteenth, putting him in the number-one spot in Los Angeles Police Department's Officer Seniority List. And you're not retiring.
No.
You're not in the drop program.
No.
John is going nowhere except back to work this afternoon. In nineteen forty-three, dropped out of Dorsey High School, committed forgery. He doctored documents to join the United States Military. He was a B-24 naval tail gunner fighter in the Pacific during World War II. Began his law enforcement career as a Los Angeles Police Officer. In nineteen fifty-three, assigned to Central Division. Assigned to Accident Investigation Division March seventh, nineteen fifty-seven, to October fourth, nineteen fifty-eight. Mr. Garcetti, were you born in nineteen fifty-seven? Before your time, he was protecting the people of Los Angeles. Also assigned to Metro...
My parents weren't even born yet.
What's that?
My parents weren't even born.
Also assigned to Metropolitan Division, October second, nineteen fifty-eight, to November seventh, nineteen sixty-four. During his career, has been part of some notable incidents and events, such as security for Prime Minister Khrushchev, nineteen fifty-nine, Democratic National Convention, July nineteen sixty, Bel Air Fire, November nineteen sixty-one, Flying Tiger plane crash in North Hollywood, December nineteen sixty-two. And we're talking about a man who's got a history of LAPD. That's incredible. Promoted as sergeant November eighth, nineteen sixty-four, assigned to Van Nuys Patrol until May twenty-first, nineteen sixty-six. Still, Eric Garcetti wasn't born. O'Toole was assigned to Accident Investigation Division on May twenty-second, nineteen sixty-six, became a detective in nineteen seventy-two, continuing his work in Accident Investigation Division to January nineteen seventy-three. Transferred to Valley Bureau Accident Investigation Follow-Up in seventy-four to seventy-nine. Transferred to Valley Traffic Division, has never left, never left, the San Fernando Valley and the good people of the Valley. John O'Toole starts work at five AM and ends a ten-hour shift four days a week by presenting evidence to city and state prosecutors for felony misdemeanor charges and drunk driving and other serious cases. He says, quote, "The longer you stay, the harder it is to leave," explaining his love for his job as a member of the Los Angeles Police Department. Married to his wife Rita at Saint Peter's Villasimilca in Vatican City in nineteen sixty-two, has been married for forty-four years. States that his dedication to his job, it seems, is only surpassed by his dedication to his lovely wife Rita. And John, I worked with you when I was at Valley Traffic Division, and can I have the members of Valley Traffic to here, come join us here? Please join us. And Commander Val Panacea, who's also retired captain, Greg Meyer, and also current captain. How are you, Ron? I mean, this is a man who is not retiring, a man who's eighty years of age, a man who still puts that uniform on, a man who is serving the public, the people of Los Angeles for all these years and to continue to do so. Number-one seniority in the Los Angeles Police Department, the legendary. And all the times I worked with you, John, any time I asked you a question, you always had an answer. It wasn't the right answer, but you always had an answer.
At least I said something.
At least he said something. So I want to just congratulate you. And when I read in the Daily News that you were not retiring, but that you were at this momentous time in your life and your career, I wanted to bring you down. I know the chief and Councilman Smith join me along with your colleagues to recognize you and make sure that you know we appreciate everything you do. And I remember there was a celebration at Van Nuys Roll Call a number of years back when you celebrated, I don't know how many years on the job. There was a celebration in the roll call room. And I said, "Someday, if I'm a city council, I want to get John O'Toole down to city council." How many times you been down to city council?
I was here for Foster when he retired.
Okay.
And back, oh, around nineteen seventy, when we come over to, before Jacobs.
Okay. Before, nineteen seventy. So it's been a while since you've been down visiting us at city council. Chief Bratton, well, no, First Greg Smith.
As Mr. Smith is coming forward, Mr. Zine, I know how much it means to Officer O'Toole to have a classmate from the academy present this award, so thank you for doing that. We appreciate it.
Who made that be?
That's you, Mr. Old Guy. Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I'm going to be short, because we have the chief here, and I want to let the chief speak. But I look every month at the Police Protective League magazine called Blue Line, where they show the people retiring from LAPD. It is so rare to see anybody over even thirty years. We have Val Panacea, who's going on in thirty-one years. Thirty-eight. That's very rare. That is very, very rare. Most officers can put in twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, but it's a very demanding and tough job. Physically, it's a tough job, mentally, a tough job. To see anybody have anything over thirty is certainly miraculous. What John has done is truly record-breaking and something we want to really commend him for and thank him for. You've lived through a lot of very interesting times in L.A., and you have a lot to remember, and you're going to continue working for us, and I'm just so proud of you, as all of us are, to do what you've done is truly a major accomplishment. And we just want to recognize you and thank you for that service and continued service. And we're glad this isn't a retirement resolution. So keep up the good work, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Appreciate it. On behalf of the department, I want to thank Councilman Zine and Greg Smith from the Valley for the honor that they're according to John this morning, in honoring him, they're honoring the department. John is, as you can see, at eighty years old, still able to do the job. It's good that he has long arms, because...
With hash marks.
Put all those hash marks, that might have to do a few more pull-ups to stretch those arms out a little.
He fits in a uniform better than a tennis helmet.
In reading his bio, that if you think of the life that this gentleman has had and continues to have and for many years into the future, during World War II, to crawl down that twenty-five-foot tunnel to the back of that B-24, mission after mission, and then to crouch behind those machine guns and go out and face the enemy, the sheer terror of that, and he survived wounded and came back to continue his service. And he has served the city and this department in an honorable way, and we should all hope to basically have him as our model. I had the opportunity to partner up with John about two years ago, that we were privileged to, at the Lono Vega Library, escort the presidential jet into the new exhibit. And John, during his career, had the opportunity to escort several presidents as they traveled through Los Angeles. And John and I were in, I think it was, what, about a nineteen sixty-six Chevy or something we were riding around in, leading that plane in. And he was like a little kid. He put on that siren and those two red tin cans on the top of the cab, and it was just like he was back in the sixties and seventies again. John, it is a pleasure to be chief of police, to be here with you, on behalf of all of your colleagues, to say thank you. He was here, if you think of it, when Park Center was built many, many years ago. And he'll be here when we dedicate the new police headquarters in two thousand nine. And we'll be happy to have you there to basically create the next generation for the Los Angeles Police Department, because you certainly have done a great job representing the current generation. You're the best. And the best is, a word that is used to describe him by his colleagues, is dependable. His nine colleagues in those B-24s depended on him to cover their rear end, and the men and women of the department, the Valley, continue to rely on your dependability to help them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief.
And Captain Ron Marbury, the captain of Valley Traffic Division.
Captain. Thank you. I'd like to thank Councilman Zine and Councilman Smith for their support of John O'Toole and their support of keeping the community safe. This is just a small part of what they do to help us in the Valley and to support us in our efforts to keep our community safe and strong. It's truly an honor to be up here with John O'Toole. John is looked upon by myself and his other colleagues as kind of our mentor. He's a man with tremendous insight. He's eighty years young. We go to him for, you know, years of history that he can share with us, why we do certain things, certain ways. And he's always willing to share with us, and we appreciate that about John. His insights, his knowledge, and at eighty years old, he is the sharpest, strongest, and capable individual that I know at eighty. I hope I'm half that, that eighty years old, Mr. John O'Toole shows up every day, doesn't call in sick, very, very rarely. Five o'clock, he's out there grabbing the papers, he's ready to go. On his days off, he'll call us and say, "Hey, how's things going?" Or if there's something on TV, he'll call us and say, "Hey, can I come in and help? What can I do? What can I do?" John's a tremendous motivator for all of us. You know, it's amazing, because, you know, you go to John O'Toole and you ask him a question, and the depth of the insight. He's productive, he's insightful, he's knowledgeable. You know, what do you do? What do you say about a guy like this? How do you honor a guy like this? And I think the best thing we can do is say, "Thank you so much, John, for the years of service." He's not going to retire. I think I'm going to probably retire before John does. He'll have like ninety-nine years on the job. He'll still be there, showing up every day at five o'clock in the morning, you know, better, stronger than all of us who've been around for years. Thanks again to Councilman Zine, Councilman Smith. Thanks to John O'Toole for the phenomenal job. And yes, we got some reports for you to do back at work, so hurry up and get back to work. All right. Thank you very much.
I want to, John's going to have the microphone, but I want to show, this is a rare sight. Five years, every year you do on the police department, after five years, you get a hash mark. Now, very, very seldom are you ever going to see five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, forty, forty-five, fifty. You're looking at fifty years of service. Next year, you'll get another hash mark, because you have fifty-five, because you've turned in fifty-four years at your eighty years of age. This is an incredible sight. You don't see this anywhere. Someone that does this many hash marks. My goal, John, is to have the chevron meet the hash marks, so I have to do an extension, a special shirt with an extension. This is absolutely, this is historical, because you just don't see this. It doesn't happen. So now it's time for us to hear from Detective Sergeant, my good friend for so many years at Valley Traffic, John O'Toole.
And just before, we have one other councilmember that wanted to add his good wishes. Mr. O'Toole, hang on one moment. Mr. Alakon, I'd like to recognize it this time.
Well, after all those commendations, I was just thinking that after Chief Bratton finishes his second term as chief of police, that perhaps Mr. O'Toole would be in line for the application for the chief's job. So thank you so much for all your service, and you're really a positive role model in a city that needs a lot of positive role models. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. O'Toole.
I want to take this moment to personally thank Councilman Zine, other distinguished members of the council, Chief Bratton, Inspector Panacea, my immediate captain, Marbury, my immediate supervisor, Bill Bustos, and certainly not last, my coworkers. When I came on this job, our detective bureau was stationed in the city hall. The old central station was at First and Hill. It was a brownstone building with a turntable where they could turn the carriage around so horses could pull it back up. The San Bernardino Freeway was known as the Ramona Freeway. And we moved from the old central station to, in those days, it was called the Police Administration Building in September fifty-five. It remained that until after Chief Barker's death, they renamed it in his honor. It's been a pleasure to work for all the chiefs we've had and all the coworkers, most of whom have retired and moved on to other, whatever you want to call it, they left. And I want to, since they were mentioning Jackie Robinson, we had a lieutenant when I came on, Rocky Washington. He was the brother of Kenny Washington, who also was a great football star at UCLA. And gee, I don't, you know, I can remember when our baseball team played in the old Wrigley Field at Forty-second and Avalon, and the Hollywood Stars had us over next to Pampas Big Auditorium. Everything has changed, and probably always will continue to change, but I want to take... Uh, everything has changed, it probably always will continue to change, but I want to take this time to personally thank the police department for putting up with me all these years.
Thank you very much, and congratulations again. Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're gonna go in the back room for...
I'd like to recognize again Councilwoman Jan Perry for special Earth Day presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We had a nice gathering this morning in the fourth-floor media room for the recipients of recognition for Earth Day, and standing with me is Dietrich Allen, General Manager of Environmental Affairs Department. And, um, as we go through our list of awardees, um, I'll ask them to stand from their seats. Um, many of them have been recognized upstairs, and I believe council members will then go in the back and take pictures, but it's a, a pleasure to stand here in commemoration of Earth Month. This year, the Environmental Affairs Department has worked diligently to promote the importance of protecting and improving our environment, promoting environmental justice, and sustaining a very good quality of life now and for future generations. The department has also reminded us that the protection, restoration, and enhancement of the environment are vital to the quality of the lives of our residents, workers, and visitors to our great city. So, as a token of our appreciation, in just a moment, I'll present Dietrich Allen, General Manager, this month's, uh, uh, resolution, in just a minute, uh, for her and the department's tireless efforts in preserving our, uh, environment. Additionally, each year in honor of Earth Month, the city recognizes proactive individuals and organizations who are committed to improving the environmental elements of Los Angeles communities. And I would like to name those individuals and organizations who've taken an active role in protecting our most valuable resource, our planet. And in collaboration with Earth Month, each council district was asked to nominate an individual and an organization that is committed to improving our city's environment. Each honoree represents some of the best that each council district has to offer in terms of advocates for our shared environment. Earlier today, as I mentioned, they received certificates recognizing their accomplishments, and some of you were able to join me on the fourth floor. So, I'm going to just take a moment to read their names and organizations, and if you're still here in the chamber, stand and be recognized. Council District One, Friends of the Los Angeles River. Council District One, Audubon Center at Debs Park. Council District Two, Tree People. And Council District Two, Bill Ike. Council District Three, Canoga Park, Business Improvement District. And for Council District Four, the Hollywood Beautification Team. Council District Five, Jessica Hall. And in Council District Five, Laurel Canyon Association. Council District Six, Melinda Kelly. And in Council District Six, Suzanne Dahlman. Council District Seven, Valley Crest Landscape Companies. Council District Eight, Clean and Green Conservation Corps. And in Council District Eight, the Echo Club of Crenshaw High School. And in my own district, Cecilia Nunez, and the South Los Angeles Beautification Team. Council District Ten, Karen Haas, and the Twenty-Fourth Street Elementary School Garden. Council District Eleven, Francine Diamond. And Council District Eleven, Concerned Residents Against Air Pollution. Council District Twelve, California State University, Northridge. And Jelena, Jelena Koshani? Okay, I'll say Jelena, and I came pretty close before. Koshani?
Yes.
Okay.
Yelena.
Okay, Yelena, Yelena, thank you. Council District Thirteen, Scope and the Los Angeles Apollo Alliance. And also Tiger Kang, President of Pacific American Volunteer Association. Council District Fourteen, Julie Maharaj. And the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority. Council District Fifteen, Martin Byhauer. And the Cabrillo Marine Aquarium. And thank you so much to all the honorees who have demonstrated an overwhelming commitment to habitation protection, greening, recycling, toxic reduction, cleanup projects. They have set a high standard, and I know that we all want to thank them for improving our quality of life and making our city a better place in which to live. Thank you very much. And again, for council members who want to take pictures with their awardees, uh, please join them in the back room for photographs.
And, uh, council members Parks and Rosendahl would like to add their good wishes. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to, uh, thank Mr. Vandenberg, uh, from the Echo Club of Crenshaw High School, who has made a, uh, life commitment to helping the kids at Crenshaw, and also Miss Tasha Wallace from the, uh, Clean and Green, who really is part of our program of cleaning up the issue of graffiti in the Eighth District, and I just want to say hello to all my Crenshaw High School students. Thank you very much for being here.
And Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank Jan Perry for doing this and showcasing people who are truly making a difference in our great city. Thank you. And I would just like my group to stand up for one quick second. Concerned Residents Against Airport Pollution, and the Rubens were the key players, and the other folks are standing there right now, is Don Gigan and Susan Fonte and Gwen Reinhardt. We're in the midst of a real issue in our district regarding toxicity of the air, and these are true leaders making a difference in the community on health issues. Thank you so much for doing that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Labange? Mr. Labange?
Yeah, just a shout-out to Sharon Romano and the great job the Hollywood Beautification Team does, which uses a lot of community service hours from those who, uh, help us. Sharon Romano, give a very, Los Angeles beautification, Hollywood beautification, all over the map. Good job, Sharon.
And ditto on that, and Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much. Well, we all know the great work that the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy does, are large projects, but they're actually involved in several small projects in my district, which I want to commend them for, particularly the Sixth Street Green Corridor project, which could provide green space for kids who attend Hollenbeck and Roosevelt High School. I want to thank them and commend them for that, as well as Teacher Julie Maharaj, who brought this idea to the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, so thank you so much. It's gonna be a great thing for our kids, and thank you, Jan Perry, for doing this. It's wonderful to acknowledge those groups for doing great work out there.
And, uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, Mr. President, I just know the man next to you, Tiger Chang.
Tiger Kang.
Is gonna have four thousand volunteers in Griffith Park tomorrow. Give them a big hand for the great work that they do, Tiger.
And we will certainly announce, during announcements, get as many people there to, uh, clean up. If you'd like to do something for Earth Day, please join us in Griffith Park, uh, we'll be doing that tomorrow. So, thank you, congratulations to all the winners. Like to recognize Councilmember Herb Wesson for our next presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I'm joined, uh, today by Ed Boakes, our, uh, Animal Services Director, and today's my favorite Friday, because it's Pet Adoption Friday. So, as you see behind me, Ed and I have been hawking dogs now for almost a year, trying to provide companion animals with individuals in need. I always say, if you're looking for unconditional love, look no further. It's right here. They will love you when you're right, love you when you're wrong. What we have today is a Mick Shepherd that's five months old. Her name is Patches. Uh, Patches, uh, came from the north-central area. That's where we got her. Uh, if you're interested in this, look at that face. Look at that, daddy's little girl needs a home. Look at that face. If you're interested in Patches, please call us at eight-eight-eight-four-five-two-seven-three-eight-one. I repeat, eight-eight-eight-four-five-two-seven-three-eight-one. And for those of you that, um, you may call and you find out that Patches has already been adopted, know that in our shelters throughout this city, we have hundreds of companion animals, dogs, cats, uh, even rabbits, and more, you name it. And also, as an interesting aside, Patches has a brother who's at the shelter as well. She is about as big as she's gonna get, she may get a little bit bigger. Again, she's five months old, she's, she's looking for a home, and look at this beautiful little, what do you call this thing? A scarf? A, a dog scarf collar? Anyway, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask our GM to say just a few words. We're lucky to have him here.
Thank you, Councilmember Wesson, uh, members of the committee, or, I mean, the council. It's a pleasure to be here. This is a wonderful program. One hundred percent of the animals that have been, uh, coming down to the city council have been adopted, so this is truly a lifesaving program, and it really does highlight the emphasis that the city council places on the lives of the lost and homeless animals in our shelters. So, I can't thank you enough. Thank you.
And, and lastly, lastly, I will say, please, members of the audience, don't be shy. A significant, uh, number of the animals that we have don't even leave, uh, City Hall, but as Ed said, we have a one-hundred percent adoption rate. When you adopt one of these dogs, you are saving their lives. When you adopt one of the cats, you're saving their lives. And in competition with the County of Los Angeles, we cannot let the County of Los Angeles and Mike Antonovich, Supervisor Antonovich, uh, outdo us, so I'm saying to all of our city, city employees, staff, family, please come adopt Patches. Look at that face. Look at that daddy's little baby right there. All right, thank you so much. I think Councilmember Parks, we should, tell Mr. Parks, I'm going to pay for the dog and have it sent over to, uh, him and Bobby. No, we're really looking for a home. No, that was just a joke. Please adopt this dog.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Our next presentation will be by Council President Eric Garcetti.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and I join here today with, uh, my great colleague and friend, Tom Labange. Um, the two of us have the wonderful privilege of representing the Silver Lake area together to honor somebody who's not only, uh, a jewel in Silver Lake, um, but somebody who is an incredible, incredible hero here in Los Angeles, whose life we celebrate here today. Today, Bee Gold turns eighty years old. She is one of the most passionate and hard-working women in Los Angeles, and her life has been dedicated to art, to education, and to her community. She was born in Brooklyn in April of nineteen twenty-seven, and remained in the New York area until she was in her early twenties. She attended the High School of Music and Art as an art student, and was a scholarship student at the Art Students League for four years. But she wised up and left New York for Los Angeles in nineteen forty-nine, and enrolled in the Los Angeles City College, uh, where she met Jack, her husband and partner of fifty-three years, and they together raised four children. And we certainly miss Jack so much, and he was such a, a great part of our Silver Lake and Los Angeles community as well. These commitments to early childhood education began with her involvement in the Tarzana Cooperative Preschool, uh, in the San Fernando Valley, where she discovered her love of working with young children, and was lucky to be able to devote her career to their interest. She eventually became the director there, and went on to receive her master's degree, and taught special education classes for the Los Angeles Unified School District. In nineteen seventy-eight, she founded Child and Family Services of Los Angeles, recently renamed Pathways, a private nonprofit public service agency that provides childcare resource and referral services, as well as training for working with young children with disabilities. And the service area encompasses, among other places, her neighborhood of Silver Lake. As its executive director for nearly sixteen years, Bee's renown as an expert in early childhood development grew around the world. She retired in nineteen ninety-four, uh, but is still, um, somebody who people turn to for advice in the early childhood education field. Since her formal retirement, she certainly hasn't retired, but she has spent a lot of time in her garden with her grandchildren, her three pools, and her beautiful, beautiful artwork. Um, she is currently the membership chairperson of the Silver Lake Seniors, an organization over three hundred strong, and I know we've got many members of the club here today, and we want to welcome you, and thank you all for coming here as well. And Tom Labange has been working very hard to provide a new home, uh, hand-in-hand with our office, for what will be the Northeast, uh, seniors, but the Silver Lake seniors at the heart of that. Um, this is ages fifty-five and up, but I'm sure they wouldn't discriminate, uh, against age if somebody younger wanted to join as well. Includes field trips, dance lessons, Tai Chi training, strength training, writing workshops, and more, and she's really been instrumental in campaigning for the senior center that, to serve the needs. I know she met with me and Mr. Labange countless times, um, and said, demanded that we do the right thing and find, uh, that Silver Lake Senior Center that will be opening this summer. She currently serves on the Silver Lake Governing Board of Neighborhood Councils, an at-large representative, um, and her slogan, "Go for the Gold," uh, was successful, and she's also chairperson of the Silver Lake History Collective, a committee she founded, which is devoted to recording and collecting information on Silver Lake's history. And this month, many of Bee's artwork will be on display at the Jafari, uh, sorry, the Jafari, Jaferrari? Jaferrari? Is that how you pronounce it?
Jay Ferrari.
Jay Ferrari. It was put together. The Jay Ferrari Gallery in Atwater Village, uh, for her retrospective art exhibition, and I commend this to all of you to go see. This show brings together her works covering sixty-five years, and I encourage everyone to stop by and see it. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Tom Labange to say a few words, and we are just so pleased to be joining with so many of your friends to celebrate eighty years of amazing service to this entire country. Thank you.
Mr. President Garcetti, and, uh, Madam President, Ms. Perry, uh, members of council, to the public in this John F. R. Chambers, to those watching us, this is why we do what we do, because there's great citizens like you, Bee Gold, great citizens, together with all these other good citizens of our community, who love each other, and who feel strongly, and who come together on a daily or weekly basis at a public park to try to strengthen their lives through the social relationships that happen when you get together. There's two things you need in life to survive. You know what they are? Mr. Garcetti, you're a Rhodes Scholar, let me put it on him.
I defer. You're a much smarter and wiser man.
He prefers to be. The two things you need to survive in life is water and relationships, and in Silver Lake, we got the water, thanks to Mr. Mahalan.
That's right.
Okay?
And Herman Silver.
But, for relationships, we got Bee Gold, and all those at the Silver Lake Senior Center who bring us together. I just know the importance, and I was talking with Janice Hahn the other day, we were talking about the importance of City Hall, and how when they go to Washington, when you go to Congress, they have various days where various groups come down, the veterans you see and walk, the nurses, the various people come and lobby, you know, like you just did so hard to get the cat park in Hollywood, Eric. That's what you're doing too, coming down here. These are the people we help in Los Angeles, and I want to especially thank my deputy Patty Malone, as you want to thank your deputy, Mr. Garcetti.
Joe Bernardo.
Joe Bernardo, who helps directly with the seniors, because that's the contact. But we're in the City of Angels, next to a gold mine named Bee Gold, and today is your birthday, so, Mr. Garcetti's gonna lead us, I'm gonna be behind in the bassist, saying, "Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Bee. Happy birthday to you." And these flowers, which are from Silver Lake, very own jillyflowers. Happy birthday. And along with the flowers, uh, from the fourth district, we add the greatest bread ever made. It's not gonna convert you, Bee, it's made by a bunch of nuns underneath the Hollywood sign, but it's from the monastery of the angels, because today and every day, Bee Gold is an angel in the City of Angels. Thank you, baby. God bless Jack. We're gonna answer the question. Say something. Say something.
I'm gonna say something.
Yeah, God's got a speech. It's free speech.
Thank you very much, Councilmembers Garcetti and Labange.
I want to tell you, I really, truly appreciate living in this city. I love New York. I came here not thinking I was gonna love it, but I really and truly love Los Angeles. I love the fact that this body allows the, the members of the community to really provide information and support so that everybody knows what we all think and what we need to do. And so, I really thank you, and I'm very honored today.
We love you, baby. We're gonna take a picture in the back, so get all your belongings, and we're gonna go right back to, and then we're gonna go visit the Tom Bradley Tower up on top. Madam President, let's give Bee Gold a great hand again for being such a wonderful person. Watch this way. Watch your step.
Our next presentation... Our next presentation will be from Mr. Huizar, Council District Fourteen.
Get all your stuff, folks.
Child.
Hi, Mrs. Ferencio. Good to see you, baby. Good to see you. All right, huh? Okay. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You betcha. How are you? Good to see you. I know, keep lying. Do it, do it. I look good, huh? I look pretty. Not Silver Lake this morning. Sorry, Jose, we've got a good poop here.
Well, that's fine. Take all the time you need.
All right. Good to see you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good to see you. Good to see you. How are you? Good to see you. Here we go.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and I'm really thrilled to be here today with some seventh graders from Utah Elementary School in Boyle Heights.
Yay! See them around the applause?
They are an exceptional group of students. They're bright, mature, and focused, and they're part of a group called...
SOS.
SOS. And they are leaders in their school and in their community. They're here for the first annual Youth Fourteen in City Hall Day. We're bringing students from Boyle Heights, this time from Utah Elementary School, to talk to city employees, to talk to elected officials, to inspire them to serve their community, and to continue to provide and make the city of Los Angeles the best city in the United States. Today would not have been possible without the support and help of the Boyle Heights Learning Collaborative. We have with us the executive director, Elizabeth Samora. Elizabeth, where are you? Back here? Welcome. The Boyle Heights Learning Collaborative is a group that works with schools, with community-based organizations, with city government, to collaboratively work together to make our schools the best places in the neighborhood, to strengthen parent capacity, to develop student leadership like we're seeing here today, and to foster civic involvement. The Boyle Heights Learning Collaborative works in the Roosevelt families of schools, so I want to acknowledge them for the work they do. I also want to acknowledge Utah Elementary School Principal Pat Castro for the tremendous leadership she provides. Pat, let's give her a round of applause. And I want to thank the departments and the people who are participating today in the first annual Youth Fourteen in City Hall Day. Council District Fourteen, the Department of Transportation, the Board of Public Works, specifically Cynthia Ruiz, the board president, the Department of Building and Safety, Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families, the Human Relations Commission, and I want to thank them again for hosting these students today and allowing them to explore careers here in City Hall. So with that, let me introduce to you one of these very special students. Franklin Granados will share a few words with us. Franklin?
I just want to start by saying thank you for allowing me and all of my peers to be here today. Thank you for letting us see this wonderful presentation that you showed us this day. And on behalf of all of Boyle Heights community, I just want to say thank you for helping us in our schools and our studies and providing us with books and everything we need to have a better future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And again, these are the future leaders of not only Boyle Heights, but also the city of Los Angeles and beyond. I'm just really impressed with this organization called SOS, teaching that each and every student can be a leader irrespective of the career choice in their life. And when you get on one of these campuses that has this program, students come up to you in a very confident, respectful manner, introduce themselves, ask how they can help, and show how proud they are of their school. This is the type of leadership training that I hope we could emulate throughout LAUSD. And now, let me thank the principal and Utah Elementary for the wonderful work they do and for providing our futures, our future leaders. Ms. Castro, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, congratulations for the work you're doing, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much, Mr. Huizar, and congratulations to the principal, teacher, and all the students for this well-deserved recognition.
Thank you very much. And one more person I'd want to recognize, that's Elizabeth Samora from the Boyle Heights Learning Collaborative. Thank you so much, and here's a certificate of recognition, acknowledging for the work you do on behalf of my students. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and I believe...
Give them a round of applause. Congratulations.
Councilmember has another presentation, KWHY twenty-two.
Thank you.
Also want to thank these students for waiting so patiently, and I need to remind them that we do often conduct business here. We not only do these great celebrations acknowledging people for their great work, but thank you so much, students, for being here today. And thank you again, Madam President. It is my honor and pleasure to welcome to the chambers some very important, fun people. First, Palmina Perez, she's a news anchor with KWHY twenty-two, who's here, as well as Raoul Rodriguez, the local sales manager for KWHY twenty-two, and Mr. Victor Franco, the vice president of Community Affairs and Media Relations for TeleMundo. As many of you know, KWHY twenty-two is a local Spanish-language independent broadcasting station serving Southern California, and I feel like a news anchor right now myself. This station not only provides programming that is relevant, informative, and valuable to Spanish-language residents in Southern California, but they are very much involved in their community, our community. And that's why we have invited them here today to be with us in these chambers. You see, this April fifteenth is the fiftieth anniversary of one of Mexico's greatest artists, Pedro Infante. As many of you know, or those of you who do know, he, along with others, have created a known genre of music in Mexico, and many people sing his ballads now throughout the world. He often performed here in Los Angeles at the Million Dollar Theater at our very own Broadway, the first movie palace ever built in Los Angeles. To commemorate this fiftieth anniversary of his death, KWHY has partnered with Casa del Mexicano in Boyle Heights, near my home. It's a nonprofit organization serving Boyle Heights, and this weekend, we will have events honoring his death. I personally feel like I know Pedro Infante. He was one of my father's favorite singers, and I would often wake up Saturday morning listening to his records with the needle skipping on his songs. So I blame that for my sometimes broken Spanish when I speak. But this three-day event begins today through Sunday. It will include a Pedro Infante movie marathon, a public ceremony of the unveiling of a specially-commissioned bust of Pedro Infante that will happen tomorrow, I'm sorry, Sunday at ten a.m. at Casa del Mexicano in Boyle Heights. Everyone is invited. But I'm here today to acknowledge and thank KWHY for helping us invite people to this great event, and being a sponsor, and being involved in our community. So with that, I want to thank Ms. Perez and KWHY twenty-two for their leadership, and present them a certificate of recognition on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, signed by the mayor, sometimes signed by the other citywide officers. No, this one is the mayor, and all of the city council, and the city clerk. The city clerk also always signs these certificates. Congratulations, and thank you so much, Ms. Perez and Victor and Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you. He's a professional.
Thank you very much.
A professional just arrived. And Ms. Perez from KWHY will share a few words with us.
Well, good morning, everybody. First, thank you, thank you to Councilman Jose Huizar. First, I want to offer an apology from Ibra Molas, president of Television Group, who had planned to be here today to receive this honor, but to the business issues, find himself in New York today. I'm so proud to be here, along with my colleagues representing KWHY, Channel Twenty-two, the best independent Spanish-language station in Southern California. Muchisimas gracias por este honor que nos han dado el día de hoy a la estación de televisión al canal veintidós. Nosotros como grupo de televisión tenemos un compromiso con la comunidad, tenemos el compromiso de siempre mantenerlos unidos, tenemos el compromiso de siempre mantenerlos informados y de darles la mejor programación. Gracias, nos sentimos muy honrados por este honor que nos da la ciudad y muy felices de estar aquí. Gracias.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam President, and I want to again thank Channel Twenty-two and Victor Franco as well from TeleMundo, who continues to provide the linkage with the city of Los Angeles, to continue to provide the segment of population in Los Angeles that speaks Spanish, not only through KWHY, but also the other affiliate sister, TeleMundo stations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Huizar. Our next presentation will be Councilmember Parks, RBD Communications.
How are you, students?
Going away for the weekend. And the wife, too, she's coming.
Today, we're honoring a person that's been a mainstay in the business community, not only throughout the city, but specifically in the South Los Angeles area, and that's Mohamed Nasrdeen. He started the Recycling Black Dollars Communications, or Recycling Black Dollars Organization, several years ago because of his concern about some of the negative stigmatized language that was being directed towards South Los Angeles. And what he intended to do, or attempted to do, as far as bringing a clear message to people that there is significant economic growth and capital within the black community, and if they would merely look at how they would recycle those dollars over and over amongst businesses in the community, and to hire people within the community, they would get significant return on that investment. That issue has been so successful, it's moved into, now, we're here today to honor the fact that the eleventh annual April is Black History, or Black Business Month celebration, is where he has now taken this. And with that issue of dealing with the Black Business Month, he is putting together a program in which, the first time I've seen this term, a steel parade, where they have fifty vehicles that are in place that bring forth vendors and people that will be able to show their wares in the black community. He also has been a part of positioning himself a notable public speaker. He's spoken before the NAACP, the Black Caucus. He's also, as far as the White House Conference on Small Businesses. He's also organized the Black Business Association of California, and been honored by the state legislature, L.A. Counterboard of Supervisors, the Senate, the United States House of Representatives. He publishes a number of black financial documents, such as the Black Dollar, which is a monthly publication, and the Recycling Black Dollar Resource Guide. We're here today to honor him for not only his effort in recycling black dollars, but because of his insistence in moving forward that April is Black Business Month. And we'd like to ask Mohamed to come in and make some comments about that.
Thank you very much, Councilman Parks, City Council. No problem.
Mr. Weston.
No problem. It's no way that I could not rise and speak to a very, very dear friend who was kind of like alone in the dark for many, many years, where people didn't understand what he was trying to do. And I want to say, in the beginning, Mohamed had more doors slammed in his face than were opened to him. But he persevered, and now people are beginning to say, you know what? He was right. And Mohamed, you are right, and I'm glad that I've stood with you as your friend for over the years. Because of the work that you're doing, that you've done, it's easier for me, as a council person, to get businesses to want to even come into our community. Because of you, I think people no longer believe that when you go south of the Tenth Freeway, that you're entering a zone that you don't want to enter. I mean, like Councilmember Parks said, you do it all. I remember your radio show, and I was a guest in the class in which you treated me, so I just rise to say that this is the least that we could do for you. In fact, the things that you do for our community, priceless. So again, my dear friend, I want you to come back another eleven years from now. Hopefully, we won't be in little wheelchairs, and we'll celebrate all of the great work that you've done. Anyway, thank you, and keep on keeping on.
Thank you very, thank you very, very much, Councilman Weston. To the entire body, we are not trying to create a separatist movement. We actually are attempting to work together to achieve success. It is our belief that a strong black Los Angeles makes a stronger Los Angeles. We're all in this together. We have a very, very high rate of African-American male incarceration, and unfortunately, the chief is not still here, but I really wanted him to know that we're working diligently to create programs to get more business generated, because when those young men come out of jail, when they serve their time, they're not able to get traditional employment. But they can work for businesses, and they can start their own businesses. So we want to develop and strengthen the businesses in our community. We have with us today Mr. Roosevelt Robey, who is instituting international trade business in schools, so that young people can be taught how to trade and do business internationally, right here in South Central, in those schools. So, Mr. Robey, if you'd say a couple of words, please, to that?
Thank you, Ms. Nasrdeen. Yes, international trade plays a very, very important role in Los Angeles, especially with the LAX Airport and the Los Angeles Harbor, the foreign products coming in and out of this city. It's amazing the kind of money that's being made in that area, and there's very few people know how to participate and become a part of that. And that's what we have committed ourselves to, is training a hundred thousand of God's new millionaires here in Los Angeles, getting them involved with international trade. Thank you.
All right. We also have, is Phyllis Rowley still here? Phyllis Rowley has recently joined us here in Los Angeles to work with the L.A. Unified School District and other districts to teach entrepreneurship in our school system. And I think that's vitally important, that our young people begin to embrace entrepreneurship as an occupation. It is indeed viable, and if we create an environment where we will support the businesses in our community, they will succeed. Lori Carter, who is part of our Next Generation Entrepreneur Program, is the owner of two businesses now, at the tender age of, well, I won't give her her age, but we're very proud of Lori for achieving what she has, and so many other young entrepreneurs. We have Daniel Griffith, who graduated from Crenshaw High School, played basketball, was all-city, did not make the NBA, but he played in Europe. He brought his money back to the community and opened up a Wingstop franchise right here on Crenshaw Boulevard, and he hires his young people that he's, he's also a teacher in the L.A. Unified School District, and he hires his students. So I think the program of recycling black dollars and encouraging people to support and look at black businesses during the month of April in particular is vitally important. And you can find them very easily through Charles Briston's program, which is one eight hundred U nine U, four one one, for black businesses. So again, Councilman Parks, Councilman Weston, I thank you very much for your endorsement and support, and we appreciate being a part of the Los Angeles landscape, and we believe in making this whole place a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nasrdeen. On behalf of the L.A. City Council, we'd like to declare April as Black Business Month in the city of Los Angeles. We'd like everybody to...
So what if a crush grab?
Be happy to. Good job.
Herb?
Herb?
So that's the issue. So that's the issue. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Mr. President, I am standing on behalf of Councilmember Ed Reyes as the Vice Chair of the Plum Committee and I'm standing here, I rise with our General Manager for Building and Safety, who would share a few words with us afterwards. And I want to, first of all, thank Mr. Nick Del Quadri for his wonderful service to the City of Los Angeles. We are here today to recognize him for his dedication and service to the City of LA. Now, we often talk about personal loyalty to our friends and to our family, but we have with us here today a person who has shown loyalty to the city and to his job. Nicolino, Nick Del Quadri, has completed over 36 years. Mr. President, were you born when he started working here?
That was the year of my birth.
Okay, that was the year you birthed, okay. Following in the tradition of Mr. Zine. He has completed over 36 years of dedicated service for the City of Los Angeles and the Department of Public Works and the Department of Building and Safety. And that alone deserves some applause. Let's give him a big round of applause. Nick began his city career in June of 1970 as a civil engineering assistant with the Department of Public Works and in 1978 joined the Department of Building and Safety. And today, he is retiring as a Deputy Superintendent of Building, Building One, correct? Is that the correct title? Nick has made significant contributions to the development of the city's building codes and seismic retrofit standards through his participation in numerous structural engineering committees, building research projects on wood frame buildings, high-rise buildings, and therefore making and helping the City of Los Angeles a safer place for its residents to live. And we want to again acknowledge his achievements and contributions and we also want to acknowledge his family for assisting him and us and giving him the time necessary to commit to his job. So let's give his family a big round of applause as well and I'm sure he's going to introduce them. Thank you so much. So with that, Mr. Ederman will help me in presenting to Mr. Quadri a certificate of recognition from the City of Los Angeles for your commitment, dedication, and retirement. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you.
And we have good wishes from two of our council members as well, Mr. Smith and Ms. Perry. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to congratulate Nick on his service. What a lot of people don't know is that for many years, Nick was our go-to guy on code writing on earthquake standards. And Los Angeles is the most earthquake-prepared city in America and Nick helped us write so many of those ordinances and laws. But after the Northridge earthquake, when we had the Recovery Committee here, Nick was the assigned inspector to work with us on all that earthquake stuff. And LA recovered in one year from the biggest disaster at the time in American history. We had 98% of our housing back online in one year and the leadership of that department and particularly Nick as the point person on earthquake recovery did so much to get people back in their homes. And when you look at what's happened in New Orleans and down in Florida, what they're still trying to figure out down there, Nick and his department figured out and got people back in their homes in one year, the entire city of LA. There are people still back, not back in their homes from the 1988 San Francisco earthquake, but LA has fixed it and Nick was the lead person on all of that. And so all those unknown people who don't know who that was behind the scenes that you got back in their home, on behalf of all of them, most of which are in my district in Dennis', I thank you for your service and for your dedication to the people of LA, but also just being the go-to guy whenever we needed a guy on earthquake stuff and building standards. Thank you for your service.
And Ms. Perry? Okay, please.
Mr. Ederman, General Manager of Building and Safety.
You heard about the work Nick Del Quadri has done after the Northridge earthquake and before that. As a matter of fact, his work is used nationwide and throughout the world in terms of seismic retrofitting. The man is dedicated, loyal, and he's a very good engineer. Every morning, 6:45 in the morning, he's in his office, pencil and paper. Earlier this morning, earlier this month, we named him as the Best Engineer of the Department of Building and Safety and I want to explain to you why. When I came to the Council Chamber, I congratulated him on 36 years of service for the department. He corrected me, said 36.8 years. So thank you for a great job, 36.8 years, Nick. And Michelle, thank you for sharing Nick with us all those years.
Thank you for recognizing me and my contributions to the City of Los Angeles. Since I began my career 36 years ago, I've seen it grow and change. They were very exciting and memorable times. I've shared in its experience of natural disasters and recoveries, its recessions and booms, and its leadership and development. It is with pride that I can say, it was an honor to have worked with so many talented people for the largest and most advanced building department in the world. I thank you, Los Angeles, for this great opportunity for having served you for so many wonderful years. Thank you.
And he's accompanied today by some family members, his wife, Michelle, and also members of the city family from the Building and Safety Department as well. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grul, Hahn, Weasel, Labanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zane, Gassetti, 12 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weston, yes, please.
With your permission, I'd like to make a quick announcement. Mr. Smith, our colleague, has just become a grandfather, Mr. Smith. Did you know that, that you just became a grandfather? Because your deputy, John, come on, John, who's, come on, Patches, John just called his wife and asked her to turn on the television because he wants to introduce her to Greg's new granddaughter, plus inform her that now they have two daughters. So listen, our 100% adoption rate is still going strong and we, again, the city family is kicking in and handing up, so here's a new proud papa. Wave, wave to the wife at home. Don't hate me, this is a great dog. Anyway.
Thank you and congratulations, Mr. Lee. On the minutes, we'll have Mr. Smith move, Mr. Alarcon second. If there's no objections, those will be approved. Next order of business.
Candidatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks moves, Ms. Hahn seconds, without objection, approved as well. Next order of business.
On the regular agenda, Items 1 through 4, items which public hearings have been held, reports have been submitted on Items 1, 3, and 4. And I understand there is a request to continue Item 2 to Tuesday, April 17.
And, Mr. President, council should also request that Tuesday's agenda reflect the recommendations contained in the CAO report regarding Item Number 2.
Okay. We'll change that agenda item and we'll continue without objection. Yes, Mr. Parks?
When it comes back, we need to also reflect that the ordinance will come back with it.
Great. We'll make sure. Any of the other items special, colleagues, this is Items 1, 3, and 4. Seeing none, please open the roll, Madam Clerk. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
I.
Oh, sorry.
With?
Without objection, Number 3, fourth with. Next items.
Items 5 through 16, or items which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, colleagues, we have Items 5 through 16 right now. We do not have any cards on those, so we will open.
Mr. President, there is a card on Item 13.
13, I'm sorry, did not see that. We'll call 13 special for a card from the public. On the other items, anybody wishing to be heard, if not, we'll open and close those public hearings. Any specials, colleagues? On Items 5 through 12 and 14 through 16? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
On the continuation agenda, Item 17 is an item for which public hearing has not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, is there any objection to consideration? Seeing none. Is there anybody who would like to call this special? I do not see a public speaker card, so we'll open and close the public hearing. Seeing none, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next, if we can call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grul, Hahn, Weasel, Labanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zane, Gassetti, 12 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. First order of business.
Items 18 and 19 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay. We do have a card on 18 for the record, but we've had a public hearing on that, so we require somebody reopening the public hearing. Any member wish to? Seeing none. Okay, we will see if anybody wants those special. 18 and 19, colleagues. Seeing none, let's go ahead, open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Mr. Parks?
18, fourth with.
Without objection, we'll send 19, fourth with. Okay. Next item?
Item 20 is an item for which public hearing has not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
We do have cards from that, so we will call that special as well. Okay, if we can continue that into the regular meeting? 19? Okay, we just, we just did fourth with, so we'll have to suspend the rules in order to reconsider it. On Item Number 19, Mr. Alarcon wanted to call that special, so I will go ahead and move suspension of the rules since we sent that fourth with, we require suspension of the rules. So if we can open the roll on suspending the rules. Close the roll and tabulate vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. We'll then bring back Item Number 19. Is there any objection to calling that special? Seeing none, we'll call that special as well for Mr. Alarcon. Okay. If we can continue those two items back into the regular meeting, please. And I believe we have a special one as well?
Yes, Mr. President, there is a special one introduced by Councilmember Weiss and City Attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Just yesterday, unusually strong winds resulted in downed power lines causing power outages and an 11-acre brush fire in the Beverly Hills area. Immediate action is required for a status report by the DWP and the Fire Department to educate residents during this extended dry season about fire dangers and other matters. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Thank you. Anybody wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll on the findings. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. That item is now before us. Mr. Weiss, would you like to take that up?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to ask if the representatives from the Fire Department and the Department of Water and Power could come to the table, please. Chief Hill could come? Just to get the matter started, colleagues, let me, let me say something that just cannot be stated enough in this room, which is that we have an extraordinary fire department. And it was a real privilege yesterday at the scene of the fire to see how the LA firefighters, working in conjunction with the Beverly Hills firefighters, the Santa Monica and Culver City folks who were there as well, beat this brush fire down almost immediately. Only three structures were damaged, they were damaged severely. But thanks to your quick efforts and the efforts of your department, and in fact, thanks to the pre-deployment of assets in the hillsides, which enabled the quick response, things did not get out of hand as they could have been and the work that I witnessed was just extraordinary. Now, colleagues, I went to the point of origin of the fire yesterday, which was at 1338 North Beverly Drive. I saw the downed power line literally hanging in someone's backyard next to their swimming pool. And that was, according to the arson investigators who accompanied me, the power line that fell that sparked and caused the fire. The sparks fell onto public property that was directly behind the private homes. That public property, it is my understanding, is owned by the Department of Water and Power. And it was brush or vegetation, or whatever you want to describe it as, on that public property that led to the conflagration. And the reason I put this motion in, colleagues, is simple, is I was walking up and down Beverly Drive yesterday. A member of the public told me, hey, the city makes me clear my brush every year. I've been trying to get the DWP to clear their brush and they won't do it. That's what caused this fire, Council. And so my question to you is, what caused this fire?
Yes, excuse me, one, one second, if we can just hold time. Point of order, Mr. Alarcon?
I'm not an attorney, but it seems that this might lead to a very litigious situation. Having come back, I'm curious as to why we're not meeting an executive session on this matter.
Well, I don't, I don't know whether we'll or won't, but yesterday, the Fire Department had numerous press briefings.
May I ask the City Attorney for an opinion?
But I just want to just give you facts. The Fire Department had multiple briefings to the media yesterday.
Mr. President, may I ask the City Attorney for an opinion as to whether or not we should be in executive session on this matter?
Yes, we'll hear that. But go ahead, Mr. West, do you want to finish your thought? It's your time, Mr. West.
I just want, just because it informs his response, Mr. Alarcon, the Fire Department had numerous briefings to the media yesterday stated that the downed DWP line caused the fire. That's what they said.
That's fine. I just want an opinion of the City Attorney.
Mr. City Attorney?
The City Council could really only go into closed session on a pending litigation matter if there's anticipated litigation or threatened litigation. And I don't know if there's been any concrete threat of litigation. And the, another barometer is whether a discussion would prejudice the city in litigation. And at this point, I don't believe we're at that stage, so that we could continue in open session.
Okay.
So first I'd like to ask. You don't have to be a lawyer to figure out that somebody's going to get sued here. I would urge the courts to executive, in fact, I move it.
Okay, we have a motion to move into executive session.
Is there a second?
Mr. Zine seconds it. Before we go into executive session, if anybody would like to be heard on that, Mr. Weiss?
I would and I certainly appreciate the concern, Mr. Alarcon, but I will tell you this, the people of my district, they want to know answers, they want to know facts that are in public files right now. The facts they want to know are, was this in fact DWP property? Was this property in fact cited by the Fire Department for brush clearance? Was it scheduled for brush clearance? And what had been the history on this property? All of those facts, Mr. Alarcon, are just that. They are facts, they are public records and public documents, and if a Public Records Act request were filed today or tomorrow, these individuals would be under an obligation to produce those facts to the public. So while there may or may not be a threat of litigation, and I certainly understand your point, what we're trying to do here is have a discussion of public facts that will not change with or without a lawsuit. And, and I think it would be a mistake not to give the public the opportunity to learn now what happened.
Okay, on this question, Mr. Alarcon, then Mr. Smith.
I have a point of order that I ask the City Attorney. City Attorney, can we even discuss this matter? It's been not posted, it's not a matter of urgency, and if it's not a lawsuit, I don't think we can discuss it.
We had a vote on the findings. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to reiterate what that was?
There wasn't urgency finding by City Council in order to discuss this matter, mainly for public, a discussion of the public actions of the Fire Department and DWP. And that's why we're having this discussion right now and it was not agendized. If there is a discussion and it leads to areas that would prejudice the city in threatened litigation, we possibly could go into closed session. The council would have to vote as to whether to go into closed session on that one.
So I think to answer your question most directly, Mr. Smith, we did as a body take a vote on the urgency.
I ask to reconsider the urgency vote.
Okay, we have two motions before us. On both these motions, Mr. Alarcon? Any other? Or anybody else wishing to be heard on?
I support the reconsideration of the urgency. Well, it is not my intention to cover anything, it's not my intention to block anybody from getting information that's certainly in the public record and it's not my intention to shield the city from liability should it have some. It's only to suggest that there are protocols, that this is not a court of public opinion that, I don't want to create a court of public opinion when it may in fact go into the judicial system. I think the appropriate way to handle this is to have representation on both sides, talk about the issues and see if we can come up to a conclusion. But I just don't think that this is the place or time and, you know, in times of urgency, we sometimes jump to action and then two months later, we're two months later, we're, we're scratching our heads and, and wondering why we jumped to action. We need to be very cautious as we move forward. The most important thing is, uh, the fire was put out, people are saved, lives were, were prevented from harm, and, and some property was damaged, but we, we minimized that. And, uh, and, but, but beyond that, I, I just think this is a very, uh, very, um, dangerous, uh, line of questioning to raise in this public, uh, hearing, uh, and, and I think we shouldn't do it.
Okay, we have, uh, Mr. Smith and Mr. Zine, again, colleagues, and, and Mr. Weiss, um, and Mr. Labange, actually, for a first time. So we'll start with Mr. Smith, then Mr. Labange, Mr. Zine, Mr. Weiss. Again, this is on whether or not, colleagues, to consider one of these two motions. The order that we would take them up in is, one is reconsideration on the urgency vote that we just took, that would take precedence, and then, if that did go through, we would take another vote on the urgency finding. The second motion that was, uh, first put before us is whether or not to go into closed session, and we will deal with that if, if and when we get to that point. Mr. Smith? You okay? Mr. Smith, did you want to say?
I, I mean, I-
Okay, Mr. Labange?
I have, uh, I have a feeling, but, Mr. Weiss, I'll let you go, and then I'll go after you, if you could try to make your claim, because I don't have all the facts, and I don't think the gentlemen at the center table have all the facts. And I know it's, uh, June first, I think, is that right, counselor? When you must have your brush cleared, whether it's Tom Labange at Bridger Labange's property, or is it the Department of Public Works property, or-
The Fire Department.
Whatever?
Deadline is-
What is the deadline for having your brush clear?
Well, that's when the, uh, June first is the deadline for public properties.
Oh, for public properties. One's for my property, if, um, I have one part-
Yours would be in that category. We would begin inspections in March, I mean, in May, uh, and that-
So everything's June first?
Everything is due.
Okay, so if you want to, I'll sit back down, I'll push my button, but if Mr. Weiss has something to convince me, because I'm, I don't have all the facts.
And Mr. Zine was next, and then Mr. Weiss.
Thank you. Um, I understand Mr. Weiss's concern, and I support that, and I know you're, you were there personally yesterday, uh, concerned for your residents and concerned for the community. What I'm looking at is liability to the City of Los Angeles. Clearly, if there's an issue, and we sit on public safety where these appeals come before us frequently, on public safety, about the weed abatement, where you folks cite or advise whatever, and then they contest in, in public safety, and we try to resolve it. I think there's a possibility, since we're saying, uh, that it was a power line, and that, uh, there was public property involved, there is a possibility or a probability of liability to the City of Los Angeles. And with that in mind, I think it would be prudent that we get the facts, we get the information, uh, and I don't know if we should do that in a public arena, not to hide anything, because it's all going to be discovered. But I think when we have a candid conversation, there are certain issues that need to be discussed in executive session, and I think this may be one of those situations where we discuss an executive session prior to going to the public arena. Whatever happened yesterday happened, the tragedies occurred, now we have to figure out the circumstances surrounding it. So I would say, the property ownership dates, citations, notifications, et cetera, uh, since it's city property involved, in, in a prudent manner, it should be done in executive session, if we're going to discuss it at all, not in open session at this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Weiss?
I'll, I'll tell you what the urgency is. Um, there are thousands of people in this city who live in the hillside areas, who, uh, watched television yesterday, read the newspaper today, and they want to know, "Am I next? Am I next?" Because I live next to public property that may or may not have been cleared. So, uh, you know, I, it's, and, and I appreciate the legal instruction, but, uh, uh, I, I met people yesterday whose lives, uh, were in peril, and potentially throughout the whole hillside areas. We have people who are in jeopardy. They want to know simple answers to simple questions. Is the city clearing its brush? Are public agencies clearing their brush? Is the Fire Department citing public agencies while brush goes uncleared? Now, if some of you don't want to have that discussion in public, and you don't want to have that discussion today, um, I, I don't know how you answer the questions of the people who live in the hillsides, who are concerned about the safety of their homes.
Mr. Parks is next, and then Mr. Rosendahl on-
Thank you, Mr. President. My concern, and I think the issue of the litigation is going to come or go as, as it does with us each and every day, my issue is whether there's really an urgency, in the sense is, I would think that what they may have to say could better be done in the confines of office meeting, where then the material can be discussed, you know what, you know at the time. And as the representative for the district, certainly Mr. Weiss has the ability to go out and have a news conference or talk to people and let them know what he knows, but I don't know if the urgency is such that today we need an open hearing, because as I believe Mr. Labange said earlier, they may not have all the details, and may not have all the circumstances, and it just may not be the most appropriate place to be at the horseshoe. But I would, uh, support that we reconsider, and that, because probably I slept through that vote, uh, but that we, uh, should not view that as an urgency, because the fire already occurred, the fire's out, and whatever discussions about, uh, brush clearing and the area are things in which I think it'd be done well within the confines of a office meeting, and not a Brown Act and all the other issues. And again, uh, we would rely on the representative from that area to inform his public as to what he found out, and I think that would be the most appropriate way to deal with it.
Mr. Rosendahl? And then Mr. Labange, and Mr. Zine.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Look, be very candid with everybody. My district is also like Jack's district with the hillsides and the canyons. My constituents are worried. We are in a global warming reality. We had winds yesterday that people said to me, anecdotally, they've never experienced winds like that. In my own property, everything dried up in a minute and a half, became really dry, because those winds really do move in. What we need to do is educate the community, everybody needs to be proud. It isn't just the firemen or, or, uh, DWP, it's all of us have to know what we can do, and not wait for June. To be candid with you, uh, I think we need to be much more proactive, much more inclusionary, and I support, uh, Jack Weiss with wanting to bring it out in the open now, what, if we have to go into closed sessions, and we do that, whatever we have to do. But I want to give my constituents tools as they go home at night into those canyons, uh, and, and work with the issues so that we don't have, uh, people burned out of their homes or anybody killed. It's just a safety issue and an informational awareness issue, and, and that's why I stand up today. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Perry for a first time, and then Mr. Labange for a second, Mr. Zine for a third.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. President. And I wanted to stand up and say a few words about urgency, yes or no. You know, we all were affected by the winds yesterday, and if anybody needs to see this, I'll send you the photographs of a fellow I spoke to yesterday who lived on Seventy-seventh and Broadway. Palm tree snapped off and crushed his truck. And, uh, not only did it crush his truck, it blocked the street so that it caused traffic to bar, back up on both sides. All the traffic lights on Florence and Slauson were out, uh, uh, east of the one-ten freeway. Everybody was working furiously to, uh, overcome the, uh, horrendous effects from that, the wind, the trees falling, uh, you know, you add all that up. We all had our disasters, and, uh, I, I can't tell you whether it's urgent or not, but I can tell you this much, debating it in council is not the only way to communicate with your constituents. And I'm not trying to make myself, uh, more important than anyone else, but I actually was there with the individual whose, uh, truck was crushed by the tree, bade the calls not only to my field office but to 3-1-1. No, I didn't have a press conference about it. Uh, we happened to be in a press conference, uh, in, in Seventy-seventh Division, but you can communicate with your constituents. Doing it in the council chamber is not the only way to do that. I don't even know whether the department has the information yet or not. Uh, there were so many incidents yesterday, uh, that I, I'm sure they're still trying to quantify them and compile the information. I got an email while I was sitting here this morning that we still have parts of a tree down on Sixth Street. So, you know, we're still recovering from this emergency, and, uh, you know, the objective for me is to recover, uh, from the emergency first. When you're in an emergency situation, the first thing to do is to correct the situation and get people out of danger, and then, you know, we can take it from there.
Mr. Labange?
Yeah, the other thing too, it is a ongoing emergency right now. Is that correct, uh, from water power standpoint? It's an ongoing emergency, you have people working sixteen hours, you don't know, they have the whole thing, you brought people from out of state, from up in Utah, Arizona, up in Owens Valley here. I think what, uh, Mr. Alarcon contributed greatly in his opening remarks, so, and what Mr. Parks said, what I would suggest is, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Weiss, go out and have a meeting in that park right there, bring everybody there, bring, uh, the press there, and have that discussion, because it's ongoing. I, it doesn't have all the facts. I worry that we are not prepared for an earthquake, and I preach preparedness. Yesterday was an above-ground earthquake, and I haven't thought of the word, but I'm going to think of the word, what it is to describe, because it's a freakish thing. You could call it global warming, it was a big wind. You know, it was Mariah going, "Woo!", you know? Times ten, that was weak, wasn't it, there?
Could you do that again? Mr. Labange?
So anyway, I got it, I got it. So under the guide of that, I don't know how we could talk about that, but I would, I would support it too, because, Mr. Rosendahl, I'm a hillside guy, I'm a Hollywood guy, I got Mount Lee, thank God, and the Los Angeles City Fire Department, and those great helicopters that put out that fire, uh, two Mondays ago past, that had that incident. If we had that wind yesterday, the fire would have probably stopped in Montebello, you know, on this, it's wind kills. So there's still an emergency going on. People are without power, over a hundred thousand customers? Seventy-five thousand? How many customers total? One point five? One point four. So we have to work at it. And ninety-nine percent of all power outages were above ground, not below ground. Need to do more undergrounding. Anyway, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon?
Yeah, on the urgency, the, the question with regard to whether or not, uh, an urgency discussion is appropriate, has to do with the need for council to act. Uh, I don't know that there is a need for the council to act on anything. Uh, if, if there is some suggestion that the council does need to act, if there was some, uh, additional funding or some additional action that is needed, or that the Fire Department or DWP or anybody else, for that matter, believes that the council should take, then I think it would be appropriate to have an urgency, uh, meeting, item on the agenda. But, but without, uh, an idea about what the action being contemplated that the council is going to take, uh, I'm at a loss for why we need an urgency discussion. Secondly, on the issue of, of, I have no problem if we want to get information about what went on, there's nothing to stop us from having a discussion, as Mr. Labange said, out in the, the park out there someplace, and just having a conversation about what is the response from the Fire Department, what is the response from DWP, how are we responding to this thing? That's important information, and the public's entitled to it, and I think they should get that. But when we start talking about, uh, who owned this property, and do you think that the weed clearance, the weed abatement program was handled properly? I, I don't know, I get really, uh, fearful that, uh, information will be spewed out, that, uh, will be used out of context in some court someplace, and put the city in an awkward position, at least, and not to mention the City Council. I think those discussions need to be had in, in closed session, uh, for all parties involved, and quite frankly, a closed session discussion is going to be much more frank, we're going to have much more information, I certainly would ask more questions in, in that environment, uh, and, and I think it's going to be much more productive in the long run. So, uh, I, unless I can get a clear understanding of what the action being contemplated that the City Council might have to take because of this, um, urgency motion, I can't vote for it, because I don't really see any action, action we need to take. I see action that the Fire Department needs to take, the DWP needs to take, and that's mostly out in the field, not in the City Council.
Thank you. Mr. Zine is next, and then Mr. Weiss.
Thank you. Um, looking at this in a proactive fashion, and I don't want to get off the agenda of this particular measure, my district, Tarzana, Woodland Hills, Mahollan to Ventura Boulevard, Mountain Fire District, along with many other areas, what I would ask is that the Department of Water and Power and any other departments that have land in that Mountain Fire District area, immediately, within the few, next few days, determine if there's any areas that need to be eradicated of vegetation because of what we're facing in the weather change. So we can talk about all the issues that happened yesterday, my concern now is those areas that haven't been affected, and the other residents of the communities that think, is this safe or is it not safe? That the Fire Department, along with the Department of Water and Power, Recent Parks, whatever departments, make sure that we're up to standard, and we don't have a repeat with city property. Now, if it's private property, that's a broader scale, but we can identify the city property, and I would ask that we do that, uh, for the public safety and the public good, and get that done as quickly as possible. Mr. Deaton, can your department take care of that?
Right, in fact, I'm, we're discussing that right now.
Okay, because I think that we can resolve fears and concerns of the residents of the Mountain Fire District, knowing that we're going to do that survey, and if we need to remove brush, we do it immediately, as quickly as possible, and not wait. Now, if it's private property, there's a process the Fire Department goes through. The concern is, uh, with the weather changes, and this weekend's supposed to be eighty degrees, and I saw engine companies moving up into the valley yesterday for contingency, it was unusual weather conditions, but we've had unusual weather patterns. We need to safeguard the public safety and people's residence. So we know the areas that exist with the vegetation, so I would ask that between the Fire Department, Water and Power, Recent Parks, whatever department, city property in particular, we make sure those are within compliance, and if private residents aren't, that we take whatever action immediately to bring those into compliance, so we can avoid another tragedy as we saw happen yesterday. Chief Hill? Thank you.
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President, and, um, and I've, I've listened to what everybody has said, um, and particularly, Mr. Zine, to what you just said, which is, that is exactly why this is an urgent matter, however you slice it, because undoubtedly, there is a lot of public land out there that is adjacent to private property, and all of us have concerns about the manner in which it is maintained. Um, now, I understand the concerns that people have raised here today. I, I think we should have the discussion now, I think we should have the discussion in public. Um, and, uh, and it does not bother me from a litigation standpoint, standpoint of litigative risk, to have those discussions in public, because my view is, uh, and, and this has always been my view as a lawyer, is facts are stubborn things, and the facts are what they are, and when the lawsuits happen, the facts remain what they are. But I've listened to folks, and, and I have a proposal, Mr. Labange, um, which is, there is a concern that I've heard about, uh, the urgency of the matter. I see it as urgent, Mr. Rosendahl sees it as urgent. I've talked with Mr. Smith. If folks would be agreeable to having the discussion next week instead of today, uh, I, I would be comfortable with that. I think public really needs to get this information as soon as possible. Now, uh, I, I say to Mr. Alarcon, we have had multiple discussions on multiple lawsuits in the past, and, and these are on actual lawsuits, Mr. Alarcon, things that have actually been filed, where, uh, uh, there is some discussion, if appropriate, in closed session, and there's also discussion about the public policy issues and about the basic facts in open session, because this is an issue where the public needs to know the basic facts. You have concerns about issues that could affect, uh, you know, for example, you said, you know, the city's opinion about whether certain amount of clearance had been adequate, and you seem to be concerned about, uh, certain issues being protected from the standpoint of litigative risk. There is a way to do that, uh, and the way to do that is to have discussion of some matters in open session and some matters in closed session. And if that's what you're driving at, I would, I would accede to your, your position and agree to do it in that matter, and do it next week. But I, and if, if that's what people are saying, then I would, I would make that accommodation. I do think, uh, this is a, is a very significant matter, and as both Mr. Zine and Mr. Rosendahl said, um, uh, this is, um, this was an early warning, uh, call that we got yesterday in Los Angeles about a potentially very difficult spring and potentially very difficult summer, and the public is understandably concerned. But I would, I would modify my earlier motion, Mr. President, Mr. President? I would modify the earlier written motion to call for a discussion. We can have it on Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, uh, and we can have it partly open and partly closed.
Okay. That's seconded by Mr. Wesson. Mr. Labange?
Mr., I know Ms. Hahn knows, but you know what a joint pole is? Jack?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it should be listed in there, because it's not just the ownership of the land, it's the ownership of the pole, right? And who's on the pole, and whose wire it is. So could we amend it to just add who the owns the pole? Should we? Technically?
It's certainly an interesting discussion.
Yeah, so I think, so who owns the, because there's a, a unbelievable amount of people on a power line, and phone company, Edison, cable company, whatever, joint pole. You know what a joint pole is? You know what a joint, uh, joint pole, uh, there, that on, there, okay, thank you, excuse me, I apologize, I made a mistake there.
All right. We have the motion before us which would modify and would continue until, so, Mr. Weiss, just to clarify, it would, it would withdraw this, 23. Okay. Is there any objection, folks, to the withdrawal? Colleagues? Ladies and gentlemen, any, with, any objection to withdrawing? Okay. That will be the order. Then, Mr. Weiss will change that. Mr. City Attorney, did you have a comment?
And if the clerk could also agendize that it may go into closed session pursuant to Government Code, Section 549, 56.9b, 3B.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So ordered.
And does council wish to have that agendized Tuesday, Wednesday, or Friday?
Mr. Weiss, did you want Tuesday or Wednesday on that?
Yeah, Tuesday.
Tuesday. Without objection. So ordered. Thank you very much and thank you to the men and women in the fire department who are out there working, as well as DWP employees who are out there working to restore power. We will get to public comment next after one other item that we have had requests for out of order, and so we thank public comment speakers for their patience. Mr. Smith?
I was just going to ask that number four go forthwith.
Okay. If there's no objection, we'll send four forthwith. And Ms. Hahn has asked for item number 20 to go out of order next, which we do have public speaker cards for as well. Without objection, we'll take up item number 20. And at this time, I'd like to invite forward Charlotte Villacorta. Charlotte Villacorta. And then Elliot Petty. Yes, Mr. Weiss?
Mr. Deaton tells me that DWP has a board meeting in the harbor on Tuesday and he has requested that we have a hearing on Wednesday.
Yes, sir.
And I will, as a courtesy to Mr. Deaton.
Okay. Without objection, that will be for Wednesday then, colleagues. Please, Charlotte, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Hi. My name is Charlotte Villacorta and I worked for Albertson's Stores for 13 years and I'm going to leave of absence from the store, working with the union on the grocery store campaign, on the contract campaign. We, the members, feel that these grocery stores need to go back to the bargaining table and negotiate a good contract for us because it's been too long. We all have families, you know, and we all been through what we went through three years ago and we do not want a repeat of that. And I think that these, we make billions and billions of dollars for these grocery stores, Albertson's, Ralph's, and Vons', and I think that they should respect us enough to go back to the table and give us a fair, a fair contract. We serve the communities, we serve the customers with the utmost respect, and we feel that these grocery stores are not giving the respect back to the members. We feel that there's a two-tier system in the community and the two-tier system in the store. And by that, I mean that these grocery stores are closing a lot of their stores in the inner city, in the low-income communities, East LA and the South LA areas. And we, you know, we, the members, think that in order for us to have a change, that we have to make a difference and we're just asking for them to give us a good contract because they're taking too long. And a lot of the members are getting really nervous and, you know, we got to realize that we have families and three years ago during the strike, a lot of us had our family members taken away by committing suicide. We had a lot of members losing their homes. I, myself, had problems paying my mortgage. I'm sorry, it's just that I just wanted to let the committee know that, thank you for being behind us three years ago and we would like for their support this time around. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Elliot Petty is our next speaker.
Thank you. I'd like to thank council members Hahn and Parks for bringing this important matter before the council. I'd also like to thank council member Herb Wesson for holding a hearing on an important issue around grocery access and job quality standards at the HCD committee meeting just this past Tuesday. I'm with the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy and we're a part of the Los Angeles Grocery Worker and Community Health Coalition and we believe that the grocery industry is at a crossroads and civic and industry leaders need to take action to prevent the Walmartization of this industry. The retail food sector is a $31 billion industry with more than 2,000 stores throughout Southern California and plays a major role in our local economy. The choices made by supermarket executives in the contract negotiations can have far-reaching consequences for our city, affecting the well-being of tens of thousands of workers and their families, access to healthy food for entire communities and our public healthcare system and the city's tax base. The three chains are following the Walmart model and they're destroying a significant sort of middle-class jobs in Southern California. There's a current two-tier system in place in the industry and before the two-tier system, 94% of union grocery workers in Southern California were covered by health insurance. Today, that number is down to 54% of grocery workers covered by health insurance. The majority of the new workers have not been, are not being covered, they and their families. So, we believe that the, the industry is at a crossroads. We believe that the industry should also live up its promises that was made after the 1992 civil unrest about opening some more than 30 new stores in South Los Angeles and East Los Angeles, which they, there's been a net gain of one. We believe that the city council should address the issues of access and job quality standards in this industry so that everyone is served. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Veronica Perez Becker. And then Stephanie Martin will be after that.
Good afternoon. Veronica Perez Becker from the Central City Association. These companies have a strong footprint in the communities they serve. They employ tens of thousands of people, I think it's over 60,000 people, and have a positive impact in our city. We are encouraged that they are at the negotiating table with the UFCW and a federal mediator and we know that they are committed to reaching a mutually beneficial resolution at the negotiating table. We appreciate your public support to have these private business interests reach, come to a resolution at the negotiating table. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Martin is our next speaker, and then Terry O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very happy to be here and thank you for the council who are letting us speak today. My name's Stephanie Martin and I am speaking on behalf of Albertson's. At Albertson's, our goal is to be the best place to work, the best place to shop, and the best place to invest. And we know that the way that we do that is making sure that we take care of our associates and that's the most important thing to us. We greatly appreciate your concern and your interest and we wholeheartedly agree with you that our efforts need to be spent at the negotiating table with both the grocers and the United Food and Commercial Workers Union. Over the past month, we've been working with the federal mediator to ensure that all parties work to an agreement that benefits our associates and our customers and our business. As the federal mediator has noted publicly, we are making progress in these negotiations and we look forward to getting back to the table on Monday. We can tell you that no one at Albertson's wants a strike, not our associates, not our customers, not our leadership team. Our company and our associates have worked very hard over the past three years to regenerate our business and we've been able to make great strides. But you have to know that this labor dispute made a great impact upon our associates and that deep scars still exist today. That's why we're working so diligently at the tables on behalf of those associates. We know that a mutually beneficial contract is not just possible, but it can be achieved and we're committed to working with the federal mediator and the union to come to an agreement we can all be proud of. We made a commitment to approach this negotiation session in good faith because we know this contract impacts the lives of 23,000 Albertson's associates. Albertson's has been a longtime member of the Los Angeles community and we provide quality union jobs for thousands of Los Angeles. We know that we offer more than jobs. We are very proud to say that we offer careers. As you know, Albertson's, Ralph's, and Vons' operate more than 800 stores and employ more than 65,000 people in Southern California. We've been your neighbors for decades, we look forward to being your neighbors for decades to come, and we look forward to continuing to provide quality union jobs for many, many people for years to come. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you all.
Thank you. Terry O'Neil is our next speaker, and then Damon Rice.
Thank you. I'm Terry O'Neil. I'm representing Ralph's Grocery Company. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to address you this morning. We wanted to be here today to express our appreciation and our thanks to the Los Angeles City Council for your support and encouragement to make sure we get through this very difficult time of contract negotiations. As you just heard, we've been working together with the United Food and Commercial Workers Unions to end with the federal mediator at the bargaining table to develop a contract that will provide our associates at Ralph's, our associates at Albertson's, our associates at Vons', with competitive benefits, very, with competitive pay, affordable benefits, and the job security that all of our associates deserve. We also need a contract that will continue to keep our companies competitive where we can compete against the influx of the many, many, many non-union competitors that are entering the city of Los Angeles. We agree with the council that we need to reach a fair and balanced contract. A fair and balanced contract will not only benefit our associates, but it will benefit the entire city of Los Angeles as well. We recognize and we understand that the base of our business, the strength of our business, are our associates. We depend on our associates to satisfy our customers. We depend on our associates to make our company successful, to make our stores successful. And when our associates succeed, we, as a company at Ralph's, we all succeed. It's because of our associates that Ralph's has been part of the city of Los Angeles since 1873. We opened our first store in downtown 134 years ago. This year, we're going to be contributing in the form of new stores, remodeled stores in the city, tens of millions of dollars, including the first new full-service supermarket to open up in downtown Los Angeles in more than 50 years down near the South Park area. Last year, we contributed in financial contributions, over a million dollars into the city, and we supported many of the council's efforts. Once again, we are committed to working with the unions to develop a contract peacefully that will meet the needs of our associates and keep our company successful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Damon Rice is our next speaker.
Good afternoon. Council President and members of the city council, my name is Damon Rice. I'm the Director of Government Relations for Vons' and appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. We wanted to be here to express our appreciation to the LA City Council for your support and encouragement. As mentioned previous, we've been working together with the federal mediator and the United Food and Commercial Workers at the bargaining table to achieve a mutually beneficial agreement. Under the guidance of the federal mediator, the companies and the unions have agreed to an information blackout requiring all parties to refrain from disclosing any details or content of the ongoing negotiations to outside parties. While we are unable to discuss any issues related to the negotiations, we appreciate your understanding of this restriction. Additional negotiations have been scheduled and our current contract continues to be extended while negotiations are underway. Our companies remain committed to working with the union to achieve a contract settlement and there's every reason to believe we will achieve that goal. We know that no one wins in a strike, not our employees nor customers, and certainly not our companies. Since the last Southern California contract was settled in 2004, our companies have achieved hundreds of settlements with the UFCW in dozens of markets across the country without a labor dispute. And again, there's every reason to believe we will accomplish that again here. Vons' operates over 300 stores and employs nearly 30,000 people, which includes 12,000 right here in LA County, making us the area's seventh-largest employer. With that distinction, we are positioned to make a strong impact on the communities in which we serve. And we're able to do so through our employee and community efforts and are a committed partner in LA's workforce development. To that point, Vons' is proud to be a strong supporter of Hire L.A. and serves as the lead sponsor of the program's Work Readiness Certificate Program. Whether it be the LA Conservation Corps, LA's Best, or LA's Midnight Mission, our company and our employees have a proud history of working side by side with Angelenos and in giving back to LA. Thank you for considering our perspective and we look forward to your continued support through the completion of our negotiations.
Thank you, Damon. Appreciate your comments today. That will close our public hearing on this, and Ms. Hahn is our first speaker, and then Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Zion.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to those of you who came down to speak on this issue and to support our efforts that we're doing today, which is, we're hopefully going to unanimously pass a resolution here today urging both sides of the grocery industry, the grocery workers, and, and the owners of Albertson's, Vons', and Ralph's to continue to work together, continue to stay at the table, and, and negotiate a contract that will be beneficial to, to both sides. And we're urging that because many of us, it wasn't that long ago, it was 2003, that we saw a lockout and a strike. That one lasted for five months. I remember it went through different seasons because I'm, to tell you, I'm very supportive of a picket line. And my staff and I actually, in the winter months, we went to the picket lines and we brought hot chocolate and coffee and delivered to the, the picket line, and then it became hot and we delivered smoothies and cold drinks to the picket line. So, I remember it going through several seasons. And what, what I'm trying to encourage today, colleagues, is that we don't do that again. We think that no one won last time. We think, as was mentioned, there are scars that are still there on both sides. And many people never went back to shop at some of those stores as a result of that. And we know that the Albertson's and the Vons' and the Ralph's lost business. We know that they lost the perception of their reputation and their honesty. I'm an Albertson's shopper myself. My mom shops at Vons' and Ralph's. So, we know these workers and was said, they're our neighbors. We know them by name, they know us by name. And we know that right now, they're all very nervous. They, they speak of their anxiety to me when I go in and shop because they're not sure what's going to happen. But we're just urging that both sides stay at the table, work together, and we know that Gelson's and Stater Brothers have already reached agreements with their workers and we're calling on Vons', Ralph's, and Albertson's to do the same thing. College, just for your information, their contract expired on March 5th. It was extended to April 9th and now that contract is on a day-to-day agreement. So, we are urging both sides to hopefully quickly solve this dispute. We, again, these stores are our neighbors. They've been in our community, but the workers are the ones that we're concerned about. We want to make sure that this contract will be beneficial to them as well. So, hopefully we'll have a unanimous vote today urging both sides to solve this. We don't want to go through another lockout and strike. Please don't make us do that. It doesn't work for the stores, it doesn't work for the workers, and it really is an inconvenience to many of your longtime loyal customers who will probably honor that strike or that lockout and shop, shop elsewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Listening to Ms. Hahn's eloquent comments on the issue. First of all, you know, I go to Vons' and Ralph's all the time and it forced me into Whole Foods because I could not go to those stores when those picket lines were there. Now I go to Whole Foods and I still go to Vons' and Ralph's, okay? Because I get various items in various stores. And I too have relationships with the people who are bagging the food and showing me around. I know them by name and I have relationships. The strike three years ago still has left a bad taste in my mouth. I'm not over it yet. I think about it when I go in there and frankly, I, some of the people that work there are no longer there. They created a two-tier system that some of the older, more involved people found themselves in jeopardy and have left. I also know of others who were baggers who ended up working in Whole Foods where they got paid more, though it's non-union. And so, there was confusion there. I want to continue to shop at, at Ralph's and Vons'. I, I was very happy with Ralph's the other day in my district that donated a whole pallet of water for what we're going to be doing with the fire station in that district and I called the, the person who did it and I sent a letter to the chairman of the board. I can't tell you how much I appreciated Ralph's community involvement. But my concern is this. I will honor the picket line if a picket line goes up. And we don't need to get in that state this time around. I think the lessons learned by both the union and management in what happened in '03 have to be taken by all the leadership today to heart. Nobody wins when those strikes happen. The customer loses, the employee loses, and the ownership loses. So, hopefully you have enough togetherness about being responsible to each other that you can resolve this without a strike. And I certainly agree that we, as a city council, anything we can do to, to help in this process, we want to be able to do. Thank you, Janice, for bringing it out to us this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Zion.
Thank you. I'll chime in with my colleagues and to the, the big three there. I don't know if it's Ralph's, Vons', Albertson's, or Albertson's, Vons', Ralph's, whatever it is, the three big stores in Los Angeles. Hire L.A. I was at the news conference with the Ralph's and I think it was some high executive at Ralph's Markets who was there. Hire L.A. And that was sponsored by the mayor to hire those folks for the jobs. I remember Vons', we were sweltering in the sun. At Valley Circle Vons', we were giving away earthquake kits. We had a whole 18-wheeler there giving away earthquake kits. You folks do a lot of good for the community. Albertson's, we haven't done anything yet, but I'm sure on the horizon we will. All we have to do is ask. And I remember when that strike took place and I remember the upress, the upheaval, the concern, the shoppers, the, the issues that took place back and forth. But what's come into play now, especially in the valley, we've got some chains like John's Markets, they took Vons', they just took the V off and put John, John Barberian. A wonderful man. a wonderful man, so he now has a chain of markets. We have another chain of markets that's coming out, Viarta, and what they're doing is they're taking that business. Costco with all the goods that they sell. So what happens is it's detrimental to the employees, detrimental to the corporations, detrimental to everything. I want to see it flourish. I want to see it come to an end. I was a union director for eight years, and I know how you can have what's called win-win philosophy, win-win, and when you have that win-win, say, we're both going to come together and make it happen, everyone benefits. So that's what I would encourage at the negotiating table, let's do win-win. You bring in the federal mediator and this and that, and it goes to the hoopla. Meanwhile, the people have the mortgage payments and the car payments, the workers, they're concerned. Are they going to have a job next week or are they going to get locked out? The lockout doesn't do anyone any good, doesn't help the corporation, doesn't help the workers. So hopefully, the win-win philosophy will prevail. But I want to thank you for what you folks have done in the past in bringing this matter before us to say, we encouraged a settlement for everyone's benefit, because last time, a lot of turmoil, and when you saw it was said and done, no one really won, no one really lost. It was kind of like a draw and a lot of unhappy people, and those scars still remain. So we want to benefit the people of Los Angeles with that, and I'm glad to see Ralphs coming back to downtown Los Angeles. Soon we'll have an Albertson's in downtown Los Angeles, soon we'll have a Vons in downtown Los Angeles. But what's happening is these other independent markets, who are large markets, they're starting to come in and encroach upon that trade. And if you look at the Valley, Viarta is doing extremely well. You can't find a place in the parking lot. So however they're doing, they're taking business away from you folks. And they're nice people, I'm not saying Viarta and John's Markets isn't good, but I'm saying is they're taking away the business that you folks have. And once you then go on a strike and a lockout, now there's more business that's going to be lost, and to capture that back is difficult. So hopefully, cool heads will prevail. Jan Perry will get the Ralphs in her downtown district. I know, but it's not there for the grand opening and the ribbon cutting yet. But for the corporations, we support fairness, we support the bargaining to be done properly, and the lockout, again, no one's going to benefit. So I wish you well, and just remember those two words I learned many, many years ago in negotiations. We don't have any losers, we have winners, and that's what's called win-win. Good luck to you. Thank you. And thank you, Janice. Hahn.
Mr. Parks and then Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very pleased and been able to shock Janice Hahn by signing that motion, but it is important, and I think so many people have talked about the business that may be lost and also the employees lose salary and benefits in which they can't support their family. But I have a different issue, and that is the thousands of people that do not have access to groceries, and particularly representing a district that is the most underserved as far as groceries in this region, is in most of the areas south of the Santa Monica Freeway, that's something in which the community doesn't look forward to. Currently, even with the few stores that are there, the bulk of our business or groceries are provided by the mom-and-pop neighborhood stores of Numero Uno and others that have taken up that responsibility. We're fearful, as people have watched the stores leave the community, that they begin to identify those small store sizes that used to be boys' markets, that they view those are all marked to eventually leave the community. It was unfortunate recently that we woke up one day that on Manchester and Hoover that a store, a Ralphs store, left the community, and before we had even an opportunity to discuss what should be the alternative or another store coming in, it turned out to be a 99-cent store. So the community not only lost groceries, but they had no opportunity to even express their concern. And then in Jan Perry's district at Figueroa and Vernon, a store I shopped in when I was in grade school, disappeared and it's now a Ross. And so these are things that, in addition to settling these labor disputes, we have to collectively, from labor and business, get together and figure out, how can we abandon an entire segment of a community by moving those stores? Obviously, as a need for groceries, there's obviously a amount of money in that community in which people are buying groceries, but to put them at that kind of a disservice to not have access to fresh groceries is something that is, should be all of our responsibility to look towards. My wife was so concerned on the last strike that at the Albertson on Crenshaw, that we finished our toy giveaway at Limerick Park, and she insisted on taking the workers, the toys that she had accumulated, to make sure their families had a decent Christmas or assisted them in having a decent Christmas. And so it's something in which all of us will suffer if the sides can't get together, but it doesn't solve the whole issue. If, once the sides are together, we would expect business and labor to get together and find out, how do we replace those stores that have been vacated? How do we bring those kinds of services? And also, the quality of those services. I think the only store that's even close to a, I think the term is a premium Ralphs in my community is at Slauson and Crenshaw, and that was just rebuilt, but it still is not at the highest level of the quality of stores that's put in place. And then when you drive to Lincoln Boulevard and find you have two Ralphs stores that are as large as any stores you can find within walking distance of each other that are right off the freeway at Lincoln, you begin to wonder why that, the areas east of that community are being abandoned, and if the view is, we'll build them and they'll come, you've certainly identified the fact that people will drive to get those groceries, but why should they leave their community for something as essential as milk bread and the things that they need to care for their kids? And so I'm certainly supportive that we encourage both sides, certainly the council's not taking a position of favoring either side. The issue is, it's got to be resolved. It's something that the community will suffer, business suffers, the employees suffer, but I'm most concerned about those community members that have limited access to groceries now, and then if they are put in a position for six months, three months, two months, that all the stores are closed, then where do we put them as it relates to their families? But again, if we can ensure that, once this is settled, and we know it will be, that we then go back to the table and figure out, how do we replace those stores that have left our community with little explanation? Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Yes, I'm the councilperson who represents the area Vernon and Figueroa where Ralphs left, Ross came in, and while Ross is doing really, really well, very well, which to me indicates that it is a good location and a prime location, it doesn't sell food. The need to purchase food is kind of a recession-proof activity because people always need to eat, and we do not have enough food choices, as Mr. Parks said. And I think you'd find stronger partners in us if we believed that you were willing to make a commitment to locate in the southern part of the city, but the commitment isn't there. And just to highlight that, let me just say this, and I support union workers and I support the rights of the workers, and I welcome you, as I have welcomed you to downtown Los Angeles, and ask for Vons and Albertson's coming to downtown Los Angeles. I don't know what you're talking about, Dennis, because that's not happening. They're not, they have expressed no interest in that. So the only store that's coming to downtown Los Angeles for the first time in 60 years is Ralphs, but they are not in the southern part of the city, and I just need to say that for the record. Here's the thing that's most amazing: the only store which has expressed an interest in coming to Adams and Central is a company that's not even from the United States. It's from Tesco, Great Britain, Tesco. Tesco is coming to Adams and Central, and I'm grateful for that. I've been able to see what they do in Great Britain, and it's pretty wonderful, the square footage, 14,000 square feet doesn't pose a threat to any grocery store chain here in our own country, but I think it's pretty amazing that we have to have a foreign corporation without bias, without baggage, without prejudice, without any hesitation, come into South Los Angeles. So something that we should all think about.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Thank you very much, members of the public, for your patience. We'll now go to public comment. Again, I want to thank the public comment folks for their patience with other public comment cards that we moved forward with the other item. Chuck Tenen is our first speaker, then Michael Carrion will be second. Mr. Tenen? And if I can ask folks in the aisle way there, just to clear to the side, please, so we can hear. Chuck Tenen is our first speaker, and then you, Mr. Carrion, after Chuck Tenen.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion.
Hold on one second. Mr. Tenen is first, and then you're second, Mr. Carrion. Oh, yeah, Mr. Parks?
Let me just ask, could we get that item that we deferred to Tuesday, to Wednesday, because I may be in court on Tuesday?
Okay. Item number two, if there's no objection, we'll make that Wednesday. Thank you. Mr. Tenen and then Mr. Carrion. Sorry, I keep saying Mr. Tenen and then Mr. Carrion. So Mr. Tenen was first. Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and President Garcetti. I'd like to commend all of the city councilmembers for passing the relocation ordinance. It's only a tiny but big first step in the hard work ahead to make it work for everyone it affects, and thanks to whoever got Jane Asher out of bed to make her presence, she came through again in justifying it. And Councilman Alarcon, your points about helping the poor and needy and not the people that don't need it, your point was well-taken in giving relocation assistance to the people that really need it. Thank you for voting yes. We know that you will be an instrumental force in bringing good changes for the needy people in the city, as well as your commitment to housing. I'd like to explore with you the idea that was brought up to President Garcetti, an affordable land severance package for tenants with partnership with this city that can subsidize the idea, where a developer or a nonprofit organization in partnership with the city purchases structurally sound buildings and land that are going to be demolished and sells the improvements to the tenants, giving them a small stake in ownership without having to be evicted and more loss of affordable housing, giving tenants a place to live by owning their apartment, just like owning a condo, but more affordable. We did a study on our building that's going to be demolished at 11927 Magnolia Boulevard, and it worked out to $1,000 a month. Boy, that'd be a great thing. In Valley Village, Studio City, and other parts of the city, hundreds of tenants like myself have been evicted and displaced, recently forced out of their homes since January. This relocation ordinance came too late for us. It won't help us, but it will help others. So I say to you, councilmembers, don't stop, keep going, and accept the challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tenen, and thank you, Mr. Carrion, for your patience. Mr. Carrion is second. We have another speaker after that.
Yes, my name is Mr. Carrion. I live in the 14th District. I'm here today on a letter that was sent to Mr. Rosenthal on February 14th of '07, and it says, Council File 06-2445. Each one of you councilmembers got one of these, okay? It goes on to state, like I did said the last time, meanwhile, your policies, some policies have been met, one goal has not been reached, to improve the consistent, appropriate level of care on our street trees. Can I get your attention, please? This goes directly to Mr. Rosenthal, LeBonde, and Mr. Smith. This is your department, sir. It also goes, the inability to maintain an adequate pruning cycle has significantly impacted the long-term health and safety of our urban forest. To reduce the staff and the manage the urban forest is to proactive manner to increase the service reduction block, citizen dissatisfaction with the services, arrange pre-trimming maintenance costs. Basically, this memo states that the city is liable for all the damages that are caused by their trees due to the lack of maintenance. We were talking, you guys were talking about earlier, keeping this in close session, sir. I've been trying to bring this to your attention for years already, but the city doesn't want to talk about this, okay? If you have a question and something fell on your tree, this is going out to the public since Mr. LeBonde, nobody wants to listen, file a complaint. Look up this number, 062445, and read this. It states that the city is liable, the city is knowledgeable, that they do not take care of their trees in a timely manner. They're letting them decay. They're letting them fall on cars. They're letting them damage people, but they do not get off these seats to do anything about it.
Thank you. Our next speaker, it says environment. Is there somebody who's environment? If you could just state your name, sir?
My name is Charles Brister from 1-800-UNITEUS.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. It's good to hear from some of the elders this morning, and Richard Alarcon, I'd like to thank you for sharing that story about Jackie Robinson. Very good. Yeah, I'm concerned about the environment and the population growth here in Los Angeles. We're seeing some major problems with eminent domain. We're seeing neighborhoods being destroyed for schools and other reasons. We're seeing temperature changes with the global warming and a lack of water, rainfall. That's going to be a major issue over the next five to 10 years, increasing population, less water. So I'm hoping that you guys will really, really take steps, look at desalinization projects and other sources of water before it really becomes a critical life and death issue. So those are my main concerns about the environment right now. And then also the eminent domain problem. We got to make sure that certain communities aren't more affected. Regarding the environment, I don't know how many of you read that report that said L.A. is the worst place for environmental racism. I was shocked, but I believe we have the right team, the right representatives here at city council to address these issues, and I'd like to see that in the weeks and months to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. That closes our general public comment. If we can go to the next item on the agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Item 13 was called special for a card from the public.
Item 13, do not have, sorry, I have one for item 18, I do not have one for item 13. So is there anybody who wishes to be heard on item 13 in the audience? If not, we will open and close the public hearing on item 13. Okay, if we can open the roll on 13, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 19 was called special by Councilmember Alarcon.
Okay, Mr. Alarcon, we have item number 19 before us. We have item number 19 before us?
This item came to my attention because when I was a state senator, I had called for an audit on outside counsel, actually at the MTA and again in the city attorney's office. At the time, the city comptroller was seeking to do an audit, and that audit didn't, was not forthcoming, so as the vice chair of the Joint Legislative Audit Committee, I submitted an audit request, and that audit was conducted, and there were eight recommendations that were made for the city attorney to improve their process. I want to be very clear here, the audit was actually very complimentary to the current city attorney. Rocky Del Godillo was a little more critical of the previous city attorney, but it really was because the system was relatively new in terms of the scope of the outside counsel. So when I saw this item on the agenda, I was a little bit trepidatious about voting for outside counsel. Generally speaking, I believe that our city attorneys are competent and that we should use internal and permanent city attorneys wherever possible and avoid going to outside counsel, except in extraordinary circumstances with particular expertise that might be needed or where a particular firm might have a track record of success in a given area. In any case, I merely wanted to ask how the city attorney was moving forward and were we working in concert with the state audit and what progress has been made, because the audit was in fact somewhat complimentary on how the current city attorney had moved forward in improving the scrutiny of the project, and so I merely had that question to ask of the city attorney staff.
Yes, good night, afternoon, Councilman Alarcon and Haley from the city attorney's office. We have been in constant communication, actually, as a result of the audit, and on a periodic basis, send correspondence to the state auditor, updating that office on how we are in compliance with the recommendations made by that office, and we feel that we are doing well in meeting those recommendations and adding some of our own ideas as well.
Is there any further edification to that, or?
Well, other than that, you know, in regard to each of the recommendations, we have put in place an outside counsel committee, for instance, that reviews every request for outside counsel. So nothing is sent out to outside counsel that has So nothing is sent out to outside counsel that has not first been vetted through the process of determining that that need cannot be met within the office, either because we don't have the expertise within the office, or because the lawsuit may be so great in its scope and number, that we don't have enough bodies to literally throw at the matter.
Colleagues, let me just leave it at this, then. I intend to continue to get information. Clearly, we need outside counsel on occasion, and I don't have a problem with the concept. I just want to be guarded that we, when going to outside counsel, are doing so with the best standards in place and procedure. At the time, we hardly had any procedures, so it was necessary, and the city attorney has created those procedures. So given that this matter needs to move forward in order for us to provide appropriate counsel to the city, I'm not going to oppose it. I want to continue to work with the city attorney to ensure that the integrity of that process is good, and so I would ask the members to, I want to thank my members for their patience in allowing me to have this brief conversation with the city attorney, but to put on the public record that, in fact, I'm not voting for something willy-nilly. I do plan on making sure that the public dollars are spent appropriately, and will continue to work with the city attorney to get a greater understanding of how the program is moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Mr. President, I appreciate Mr. Alakhan's concerns, and I think we started on this odyssey about three years ago, and I believe the current mayor's motion started, and Mr. Rosenthal was involved with it. And I think the issues of the comptroller audit certainly put it in perspective. And through the budget committee, we have been trying to move forward on a number of those issues. And I think the thing that has been most helpful is the committee that was put forward that reviews outside counsel for all cases, in that we took a while to figure out, there were funds from the independent departments or proprietary departments, there's funds that deal with the sewers, and there's also funds with general funds. So we should get a report next week, I believe, that will be the first one that will show all of the expenditures from all of the funds in the city, that tells you where we are collectively, because we were dealing with them in four or five different funds. And I think the issues as we go forward, you'll probably hear in the budget committee, some discussions of whether the amount of money we spent on FSLA, should that be done in a different fashion? Because some of those, well, not those, that one law firm has made a significant amount of money dealing with three or four or five cases for the city, and we paid some significant litigation cost plus settlements on those cases. The other one, we've shown a significant uptick in employee cases recently, and that's an area to be discussed. And so there's a number of things that will be dealt with in the budget and finance, or through the budget process, but on these cases, I think it's pretty well documented that without these allocations, the defense of the city cannot go forward. And in fact, some of these people are in starting blocks, waiting to get prepared on cases. Some of them are in different phases of trial, and so I think it's in our interest to move forward. But I do appreciate Mr. Alakhan's voice, as we keep looking at ways to reduce the amount of money, but give the best coverage for the city as it relates to our defense of a lot of this litigation. So I'd ask that we move this forward, so that we can get those attorneys on board, and keep looking at ways to make the process better.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. No other members wishing to be heard? Let's go ahead and open the roll again on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved and forthwith without objection again. Thank you very much. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred without objection.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Smith requests to be excused Tuesday, April 24th, for city business. That meets council policy.
That excuse is granted.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused to arrive late on Friday, April 20th, and for the whole meeting on Friday, April 27th, for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay, that excuse is granted.
Councilmember Zine requests to be excused to leave at 11:20 on Wednesday, April 25th, for city business. A motion is required.
I will move, and Ms. Perry will second. If there's no objection, that excuse will be granted.
And Councilmember Zine requests to be excused for the meetings of Friday, June 15th, and Friday, July 20th, for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay, that excuse is granted as well.
That does clear the desk.
Announcements, colleagues? Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have the grand opening ceremony coming up this weekend, on Saturday, April 14th, of our Fire Station 59. It's at 11505 Olympic Boulevard. I'll be there, and so will a lot of other folks, including our mayor and the interim fire chief. There'll be music, children's activities, refreshments, and it gives the West LA people a chance to see the fire station, and how it's been remodeled and redone, and also the training areas that are also going to be there. It's going to be a great event. And like I said earlier, to Ralph's, I want to thank them again for the pallet of water that they brought for it. It's a real community festival. So people in West LA, again, this Saturday, April 14th, at 10 a.m., right there on Olympic Boulevard where the fire station is. That's 11505 Olympic Boulevard. See you then.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosenthal. With announcements, Mr. Labonde.
Yeah, led by Target Kang, and all the folks in the Create America community, over 3,000 volunteers will come to Griffith Park for a beautification project tomorrow. That's at 9 a.m. at the Bird Sanctuary up Vermont Canyon. And also in the afternoon, after you do that great work, go over to the Autry National Center, where they have their famous barbecue, their annual barbecue, where some of the great barbecuers come together and barbecue for the best award. Finally, at the zoo, will be their Sunset Safari that will take place at the Los Angeles Zoo tomorrow night. And also a reminder, on Sunday, at 1:45 in the afternoon at Pan Pacific Park, the Holocaust Remembrance Day will take place at the Los Angeles Holocaust Monument, and everyone is invited to attend at 1:30 at Pan Pacific Park. And not to forget, at 5 p.m., the great remembrance of the 60th anniversary of the Jackie Robinson Day, as Mr. Reyes so eloquently presented this morning at Dodger Stadium. It's going to be a very good weekend.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to notify the community, and particularly our youth, that with the opening of baseball season, many of our parks are starting their baseball and softball opening days. And just to let people know, that Saturday, April 28th, at Dinkerton, 10 o'clock, Harvard Park at 10 a.m., Saturday, May 12th, St. Andrews Park at 10 a.m., and Van Ness Park on Saturday, May 5th, at 10 a.m., and Saturday, May 19th, at Algen Sutton, and also finally, Mount Carmel Park at 10 a.m. So those are the openings of the baseball season for the LA Wreck-It Park facilities. Also, for Lemur Park, there'll be a, Mr. Farley Hudson is having his roundtable discussion tomorrow at Saturday, the 14th, at Lucy Florence in Lemur Park, and it will deal with the procedures within the city as far as the reappointment of the chief of police. And then finally, the Future of South Los Angeles for Economic Development, which will be holding a panel discussion chaired by Michael Banner of ULI, April the 17th, at the Aqua Lounge on 6100 Century, or Center Drive in Beverly Hills.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Any other announcements? Mr. Zine?
Just to cut, Mr. President, discussing the springtime and baseball, Reseda Rec Center opening day, spring baseball is going to be this Saturday, 8 a.m. at Reseda Rec Center on Victory. Also on Saturday, St. Mary's Assyrian Church is going to have a major food entertainment festival on Lindley, 5955 Lindley in Tarzan. Everyone's invited, and they have delicious food there. 5955 Lindley at St. Mary's Assyrian Church. And also, we have the 26th Annual Gala, Iranian New Year of that evening, and that's at SC. Also, on the 15th, the Pan Pacific, they will have the Holocaust Remembrance Day at Pan Pacific Park. And I know many members of the council will be there, along with members of the public, and there's full-page ads in the daily news on that. Also, on Sunday, the Sherman Oaks Center for Enrich Studies, the 25th anniversary, so we congratulate them on 25 years. And also, I want to, once again, congratulate Mr. John O'Toole, 80 years of age, 54 years, still in service with the LAPD, and everyone have a lovely weekend. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. So those are all the events in the city this weekend. Any other announcements, colleagues? Does anybody have an adjournment motion for today? If I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for adjournment motions.
Mr. President, members of...
Mr. Labonde?
I was out of council on some jury duty requirements and other issues, but I wanted all of us to remember the great Darrell Stingley, who in 1978, the preseason game in Oakland, playing tough football, was paralyzed by a very tough hit. He lived and was an inspiration to many, lived to be 55 years of age. He's survived by his wife, Marlene, and his three sons. Darrell Stingley, a great receiver from Purdue University of the New England Patriots.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Dural Johnston. Many of us worked with him as part of the Portals Rehabilitation Center. He passed away Friday, March 9th. He was only 58 years of age, born in Los Angeles, raised in Los Angeles, the youngest of two children, a graduate of Manual Arts High School. But he worked in a variety of capacity, but most of us dealt with him and for his five-year commitment to Portals. He also played a role in lobbying, visit with the city of LA in Sacramento to show our support for Prop 63, the mental health service expansion funding. Funeral services will be held March 20th. He's survived by his sons, nieces, and nephews.
Thank you. Ms. Perry, I'd like to second that as well. We also note with sadness, not a formal adjournment motion, but we note with sadness the passing of Kurt Vonnegut, a great American writer, a great writer throughout this world who passed away two days ago as well. And certainly, his legacy and his writings will live on for some time. Any other adjournment motions, colleagues? Okay. If not, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. We wish...